I guess I'll start recording and can someone say something so I can see, yes.
Hi.
Okay, good. We are good to go. Everything is good. I don't have my purple lights on today. How about I put the purple lights on? I it's a staple.
And that is uh purple your favorite color?
Yeah, I think so. That's why I have everything on the computer. There we go. That's good.
Uh, okay, one sec. If you, uh, let me just start sharing.
Yeah, let's just. If you can, if if it, if it's gonna cost you any problems then.
That work, hopefully. Someone make sure that.
Yeah, someone check just so that works.
Yeah, it seems to be fine.
Abdul, you got your mic on again?
Everything is frozen now.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Damn, yeah, I'm back. Uh, I mean.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. We're good. Okay, so yeah, let's, let's, let's just jump right into it. We're gonna go, uh, someone said what sections are we covering? We're gonna be starting with, um, yeah, thank, uh, Manuel's here. Thank you, Manuel. But yes, we're good. Um. And yes, it also does say at the bottom, but those are the exact sections, I guess. I should have put sections. I usually do. So we're doing, uh, where's my papers? We're doing chapter twenty-eight and twenty-nine, the practice questions from there. So there's quite a bit in twenty-eight. And probably not doing all of twenty-nine because I don't think that we need to do everything from twenty-nine. So let's just start here. With twenty-eight. Oh, also, I did, uh, do question thirteen from yesterday that we were having trouble with, that we were doing the right steps, but we were just getting the wrong numbers. I think what it was is that I was saying that one, I was saying that one gram is zero point zero one kilograms, which is not true. It's zero point zero zero one kilograms, because I made that mistake again and I wasn't getting the right numbers and then I realized that, so. I think it's the same mistake. I think this is what I was doing and it got us, it got me the right answer by doing this, the same steps, but just with this number, so. That's what I think the thing was with thirteen yesterday, so, yeah. Okay. Let's start then unless we have any questions before we start. Um, I will start with, I realize my mic's a little quiet. Maybe I was quiet yesterday. I'm not sure. Turn it up a little bit. Okay, any questions before we start?
No questions, sir.
Okay, uh, and as always, my notes are in the, in homework help. You can find them there or just like go to the website where you can also. Um, or if you're someone watching the video, it's in the description of the video, although I haven't been doing that, so I have to remember to do that, so. It'll be, now that I said it, it will be in the description. Okay, so let's start here. At the equator, near the surface of the earth, the magnitude of the, the magnetic field is approximately fifty micro Tesla, micro, northward, and the electric field is about that many Newtons per Coulomb downward in fair weather. Find the gravitational, electric, and magnetic forces on an electron in this environment, assuming that the electron has instantaneous velocity of that meters per second directed towards the east. Okay, so we're near the surface of the earth, right? Near the surface of the earth. Uh, let's just say that's, that's, that's our earth. Um, and we're on, we're having electron that's right above it. The magnetic field, let's say it's moving, it's moving to the east. East is this way. So this is, this is east, that's an H. This is east, this is west, so then, uh, I guess this would be. Oh, south, yeah, never mind. This would be, I didn't have to turn around for that. That would be south. So I'm kind of looking at it like from a weird perspective. Does this make sense, hopefully though? Like, looking at it come from the side, but so north is away from us, south is towards us, east is that way, west is that way. So our velocity is directed to the east, okay? Um, we have a, an, uh, what is it? A magnetic field. Fifty, so I'll put the magnetic field as blue. Oops, that's about blue. Magnetic field is northward, right? So magnetic field is, just draw in there. Magnetic field is that way, so that's the magnetic field. And then we have an electric field downward, so straight down. So I'll put that straight down to the ground like that, E, like that. So, yeah, this is definitely gonna be confusing, but E is going straight down, B is going away, so these, these are not, E and B are not going in opposite directions. So.
Maybe use the X dot from the, the normal U.
Okay, okay, okay. So the mag- the magnetic field is going away from us like that. Yeah, the magnetic field is going away from us like that, like, like a, like, yeah, that, that makes sense. So there's our electron and the magnetic field is going away.
Wait, so, so E's going directly up? Or it, or no?
He's going, he's going down. He's going directly down to the ground.
And it's going to north.
And then no, so north is away from us, not up, but like away from us, right?
Yeah.
That's why the magnetic field is going, and then velocity is east.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
So it's going into the field?
Oh.
Hey, sorry.
What's go, sorry, what's going into the field?
The B.
B.
B, it's going like into the, into the screen, into the screen.
Yeah, into the page.
Into the page, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's going into the page.
I took it as north of the page or north of the.
Yeah, it's like a weird way to draw it, but that's the best I could do, yeah. Um, so let me just draw this quickly, so this is the velocity, oh, that's the wrong color, so, uh, electric field. And velocity is that way. Okay, so we're looking for the, find the gravitational, electric, and magnetic forces. So gravitational force, that's just just mg, I'm pretty sure, if I like that, I'm making a mistake there, but no, the gravitational force is just mg, right? So then that's just gonna be, um, well, the mass of an electron times nine point eight one, so I'll just say mg like that. Uh, and I guess we'll just plug that into my calculator. Mass of an electron is nine point one, uh, yeah, nine point one oh nine four times ten to the negative thirty-one. Multiply that with nine point eight one and I get, um, uh, eight point nine three six times ten to the negative thirty, um, Newtons. Let me check if everything's recording properly. I always do it for some reason, five minutes into the recording, that's when I do my, make sure everything's recording. Yes, and we already saw the voices and I am recording. Okay, good. Um, so there's that. Let's just check the answer quickly, may as well. Uh, nine point eight, yeah, that's right down. I guess I should say down. Right? Down. So that's our force of gravity. Now we need the electric force. Okay, so Fe. Well, Fe is QE. So what's Q? Q is the charge of an electron, right? Which is just E. So Fe equals EE, but different Es. Um, so the magnitude of the, so what's the direction is going, going down, so that means that the force is gonna go up, cause it's an electron. So the electric field is going down, but for an electron, it's a negative charge, so it's going in the opposite direction. So I actually, I guess I should say, sorry, it's negative E, it's not E, it's negative E. Um, so then, yeah, so then it's just going to be, um, negative E times one hundred. Uh, so let's see what that is. Um, negative E is one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen, times one hundred. So I get negative, well, okay, pretty clearly, I get times ten to the negative seventeen. E, well, almost E, but yeah. Um, and, yeah, is that right? Let's see. One point six times ten to the negative seventeen, yeah, and up, of course. It's like, like I said, it's up. Right? So that's that. Okay, and now our magnetic force. Quite, sorry, what was it?
This isn't what, like, I don't get, how is it up, because like the electron is going down, so she ain't go after the electron downwards?
The field is going down, but the, but an electron goes in the opposite direction. The force acting on an electron goes in the opposite direction. Because you see, when I multiply it, I get a negative sign here, right? So technically, this, this, I, I'm defining, I'm defining down as positive here, so I'm getting a negative answer.
Uh huh.
Right? Cause it's saying it's a hundred Newtons per Coulomb down, positive a hundred down, so that means down is our positive direction for, for electric field.
So you're just thinking mathematically, not necessarily logically, so just do it.
Well, also, I mean, also, you can think of it like this, like the electric field, the direction of the electric field is saying, what would a positive charge, what direction of force would the positive charge feel? But an electron would just feel the same force, but in the opposite direction. Electric field, electric field is the ease for a positive charge, yeah.
So electric field is kind of assuming a positive charge, so.
Kind of, yeah, yeah. It's saying, where, what, what direction would the force on a positive charge be in, right?
Okay, and, so, and, uh, if you have an electron, it's always just opposite direction.
It's just opposite direction, yeah.
Alright, thank you. It makes sense now. I was just being confused.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry.
Isn't it up negative one point six zero two two times ten to the negative seventeen, cause the
Yeah.
Charge is negative nineteen.
I just, I just wrote that wrong. Thank you, yeah, that's it. Um, so then our next thing is the force from a magnetic field. Now we haven't done this yet, so the force from magnetic field is Q V vector cross B vector, right? V cross B. So V and B are both vectors here, um, and, um, we can cross product them. So it's, um, well, I think the easiest way to do the cross product, and I always, we've done cross products lots in physics and of course in linear algebra. So, um, let's just get the vector components of the field and then, uh, I'm sorry, of the vectors, not the field. Of the, of the magnetic field, but also the velocity vector and cross them like that. Um, I think that would work. So what are the components here? If I'm defining like this, I'm gonna call X, Y, Y, and then.
Why can't just use the sine theta equation? Like Q V sine theta?
That's probably easier. You're right. That's probably easier. Uh, since we know exactly the angle between them, yeah, you're right. So let's try, let's try it like that, so. V vector, B vector, uh, sine theta, or theta is the angle between the two vectors. Well, what's the angle between the two vectors? Ninety degrees. Sin of ninety is one, I'm pretty sure. Yes, okay. Always have to check that. Um, so sine of ninety is one. So our Q is of course negative E. Our V, well, I'm just gonna write those things, like magnitude of V, magnitude of B, uh, sine of ninety, but ninety degrees there. And then I'll just plug all those into my calculator. So negative one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen. Right? Uh, times the velocity magnitude, which was six. Yeah, six times ten to the six, times the magnitude of the magnetic field, which was fifty times ten to the negative six. So I got negative four point eight oh six six times ten to the negative seventeen Newtons. Uh, four point eight oh six, yeah. And so it's down. Why is it down? Let's see, I got a negative, yeah, well, you gotta, I guess you gotta just do the, the which way is it gonna go? You have to form the right-hand system, so. What is it again? Oh, yeah, big, okay, so this is our first attempt at this. So the fingers go in the direction of velocity. Um, fingers curl into the magnetic field and then thumb is in the direction of a positive charge. Wait, what was it? It was down or up? It was down, yeah. Thumb is in the direction of positive charge, so negative charge goes down. There we go. So finger is in the direction of velocity. Curl into magnetic field, cause it's going into the page, and this is the positive charge, negative charge would go like that. So down is the direction.
Shouldn't the Q also have absolute value?
Well, you know.
I, I guess this accounts for the direction already in a way. This accounts for the direction with the negative. It doesn't have to have it because it's negative, it's negative this up. Right? But it's positive that down, so the negative is kind of just saying direction. So if you want the magnitude of the force, then yeah, you just do it like that. But if you want the direction of the force too, it's a force vector. We are getting, uh, since it's in, I mean, I understand we're, we're getting, we're using magnitudes here. Um.
Are we near the top? I'll ask you something.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
No, like the top of the question.
Oh, go to the top of the question. Oh, I thought you said top. There you go. So, yeah.
Question, so for the first, the third, nah, the second one, I can't speak. Um, I thought the force was supposed to have like, uh, absolute values things around it, so on that, like, cancel out the negative.
Uh, again, the negative sign here is just saying direction. It's just saying, it's trying to help us with the direction. If we just want the magnitude, you just take the magnitude of it, right?
Okay.
If I'm gonna specify a direction, then you have to take into account that.
Okay.
And this was, um.
Which rule is this? The one you s- the mentioned, the right-hand rule, number three?
Number three, yeah, that was the right hand rule.
Am I just posting chat for everyone to like have it?
You might just what?
I'm, I'm posting in chat for everyone to like have it as a reference.
Okay, I see, yeah. So, yeah, there we go. So, yeah, I got, since we did this, yes, we should have absolute values. But hold on, we should have absolute values around force. Yeah, but then Q can't be negative. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So since this is taking a magnitude, right? This is taking a mag, doing this. So, yeah, now we have F B absolute, so absolute value of that too, absolute value of that. And so the absolute value of F B is that, but then the vector, so that I can take the absolute value off, cause I'm giving it a direction, so. There. And, yeah, that's that.
In these chapters, you mostly have to come up with the direction yourself, like using the right-hand rule or logic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think maybe we'll do more absolute values.
You can always do it, if you make your own coordinate system, the determinant, like, I think it's the way Springer shows it, where you do like, I had you, that will always work. So if you're.
If you can write them as vectors, if you can actually write them.
You're unsure about doing the right-hand rule, cause it's a little bit of a complicated system, that method will always give you the correct answer.
Yeah, cause you're literally doing the cross product, right? You're actually doing the cross product, so it will return to you the correct direction, cause that's what the cross product returns. But of course, there's, there's better ways to do the cross product, which I showed last, like, in PCS, uh, two eleven. I'll do it again when we're here, is the nicer way to do it. I don't recommend doing the determinant, much more complicated way than necessary. Uh, yeah. Is there a question?
No, no, you need to do a determinant, like flex on the, where am I, see, no? Just flex the muscles.
Good, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, any questions before I continue? Okay, I think we're good. So let's start question three, that's next, right? Yeah, question three. Find the direction of the magnetic field acting on a positively charged particle moving in various situations shown in some figure. Okay, uh, this is the figure. I wouldn't be surprised if we had a question like this on the test, like, just like saying directions. So, I mean, it's kind of easy, but maybe they'll give us an easy question. Uh, find the direction of the magnetic field acting on a positively charged particle moving in various situations, if the direction of the magnetic force acting on it is indicated. Okay, so. Okay, yeah, so it's a positively charged particle, so we don't have to worry about switching the signs, so we just use our right hand. So fingers go in the direction of velocity, thumb is in the direction of the, uh, field, so this is the direction of the magnetic field. So it's going into the page here. Okay, here the velocity is coming out, so it's like this, right? It's like this, and, um, wait, it's coming, yeah, it's coming out, and then the force is in this direction, up, it's a positively charged thing, so the magnetic field is going to the right here. I don't know if it's coming, coming out correctly in the camera, but it's going to the right like that. And then here, finally, velocity is going in, force is that way, positively charged, you're going into the magnetic field, so you're gonna go, the B field is down. And there we go. Any questions?
It, isn't it more rotational than any, than like straight down?
Wait, how, how do you mean?
Like the magnetic field?
Yeah, how?
Where's that force? Am I?
You're, you're thinking, you're thinking about like, in, in a constant magnetic field, the force, you know, is always perpendicular to the, to the velocity, so you do go into like a circular motion. But here, we just want the direction of the magnetic field, that's all we care about. We're not talking about.
Okay, yeah, cause usually we're finding force, so I think I'm confusing it because.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any questions about this one? Definitely good to understand this, because then you won't be, you know, the last step of finding the direction, so we will be okay. Okay, let's see. What's here? So a proton travels with a speed of that in a direction that makes an angle of that with, with the direction of a magnetic field of magnitude that, in the positive X direction, in, in the positive X direction. What are the magnitudes of the magnetic force on the proton, the ma- the proton's acceleration? Okay, so magnitude of that magnetic force is what we care about, so first I'll write F B equals Q, um, V cross B. Oops, V cross B. So, since we just want the magni- magnitude of the magnetic force, we just do F B equals Q magnitude V, magnitude B, times sine of the angle between them, theta. Okay, well, well, let's start with here, so, um, well, we know V, we know the angle between them. We know the magnitude, we know it's a, um, um, uh, where, where are we? We know it's a proton. So it's just E V B sine theta, or I'll say sine of sixty, just so that you can see. And I will just plug in these numbers. So one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen times five point oh two times ten to the six um, times zero point one, zero point one eight Tesla times sine of sixty. So I get that the force is one point two five three seven, or two five three eight times ten to the negative thirteen Newtons. And let's just check. Um, what question are we doing? Five, two, one point twenty-five times ten to the negative thirteen, that's right? So that's part A, and then part B is the proton's acceleration. Well, we know that F equals M A. So divide that by M, and then we get the, um, acceleration. So divide this answer that we just got by the mass of a proton, which is, uh, one point six, oops, one point six seven two six times ten to the negative twenty-seven, and I get seven point five times ten to the thirteen. Right, that's good. Uh, what is it? Meters per second squared. Okay, any questions about how I did that? Something is here. Okay, any questions about how I did that? Question five. Okay, question seven. A proton moves perpendicular to a uniform magnetic field at speed that and experiences an acceleration of that in the positive X direction when its velocity is in the positive Z direction. Determine the magnitude and the direction of the field. Okay, so let's start with magnitude. Well, we know that, uh, so, okay, let's take a look here for a second, um. The speed and acceleration both in the positive X direction? Oh, no, no, no. X is in the pot, sorry, sorry. So the, the acceleration, the acceleration is this way, so the acceleration is in the positive X direction. The velocity is in the positive Z direction, so I'll call that the positive Z direction. So since acceleration is in the positive X direction, the force is also in the positive X direction. Is it? Yes, it is, cause that's, yeah, of course it is. Um, so then, well, let's figure out right now, right away, what direction. Is it a proton? Yeah. So velocity, force is this way, so the magnetic field is going out of the page. So we have a magnetic force coming out like that, so that's the, sorry, magnetic field coming out like that. And what's its magnitude? Well, uh, the mag, the force, so quickly here, I'll say, okay, F equals M A, of course. Which implies that A equals, uh, F over M. Right? And we know that F over M is, um, two times ten to the thirteen. Right, two times ten to the thirteen. So, um, I guess I can multiply, yeah, I guess, sorry, I guess I can say that F, the magnitude of the F vector is two times ten to the thirteen, um, M. So now when I say F B equals Q V cross B, then I can just say two times, two times ten to the thirteen. Oh, yeah, well, I just, I'm realizing I just did, uh, F equals M A, A equals F over M, and then F equals M A, but.
Uh, shouldn't, I just have a question, shouldn't F be, like, shouldn't you divide the, the acceleration by the mass of the proton, one point six seven?
Um.
Or does that not? So multiply, multiply the acceleration by the mass.
Oh, yeah, here, I'm missing an M there. Yeah, I'm just leaving it as an M, M for now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm leaving it as just like M, mass of the proton for now, yeah. Uh, and this is E, and then I'm just gonna do E times the magnitude of V, times the magnitude of B, times sine of the angle between those two things. Um, okay, and then so what am I solving for? I'm determining, I'm finding the magnitude of the B field. So the magnitude of the magnetic field is M, mass of a proton, ti- proton, proton times ten to the, times two, times ten to the negative thirteen. And by negative thirteen, I mean positive thirteen. Um, and that's, that, over E, V, sine of the angle between those two things, looks like that's ninety. Well, it would be ninety, so there you go. And make sure that's right. V and B are going, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so I just plug all this into my calculator? Question?
For the picture that you drew.
Mm-hmm.
If V is like, if V is in the velocity is in the Z direction, right?
Yeah.
So isn't that coming out of the page?
Yeah, I, just how I define my things, like I said, this is X, Z, and then Y's, Y's coming out of the page here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I should have, I should have, yeah, it's just how I chose to write it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that mean.
Okay, good. Um, so M, mass of a proton, which is one point six seven times ten to the negative twenty-seven, times two, times ten to the thirteen over E, which is one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen times V, uh, V was given to us, one times ten to the seven. Seven, um, uh, times sine of ninety. Did I not use the acceleration? Oh, I did use, I could have just left the acceleration as a variable. I don't know why I didn't do that. Uh, times sine of ninety is one, so that's fine. So I got zero point zero two oh eight seven nine Tesla. Let's see if that's right. Seven. Um. Yeah, milla is one, two, three, so twenty point nine, yeah, it's negative. Why is it negative? Um.
Is it because of the direction that it's pointing in?
Oh, yeah, I guess I have to form the.
It's a proton, so it would, you, you don't flip your hand, I know that.
Yeah, it is negative, it is negative, because this, away from us has to be positive Y, because it's just how I drew it, away from us has to be positive Y. So it's coming towards us, so it's negative Y. So that means that it's a negative, negative that, the answer is that J hat. The reason it has to, the away from us has to be positive Y is because you have to make a right-handed system with the cross products. So you should be able to like make this like thing with your hand, so you should be able to make this figure with it. So if this was positive, I wouldn't be able to make it, but this is the only way I'm able to make it, so, there, that's it. It's like you're pointing your gun, but then you put your metal figure out to the side, yeah. Um, so that's, that's that. So that has to be the positive Y direction there, and then negative zero point zero two, uh, zero nine is what they ran into in the question. That's right. Okay, any questions about this one?
Uh, sorry, could you explain that, uh, hand thing again? How you knew it was negative J hat?
Yeah, so, let's, let me just show a picture.
Adam?
Yeah?
Uh, previously, when you, in the, your question, um, wait, are you guys hearing a feedback?
No, no.
Okay, it's just me then?
You sound good.
Previously, when you did a question, you found the force, did you already, cause then you divided it back by Q to get the wait, not the mass, to get the acceleration, I was just like, couldn't you have just done, I was it, V cross B, and you'd have gotten the basically the acceleration? Maybe I'm wrong, let me check this quickly.
V cross B would get me, well, it wouldn't get me anything quite yet. Multiply that by Q, you'd get the force.
Yeah.
But I know the force is M A.
They gave us the mass.
Well, we know the mass, cause it's a proto, cause it's a proton, yeah, cause.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right? So good, or question?
Nah, it's fine, it's fine.
So, yeah, so what I was saying about the right-hand system is that you, this is a right-handed system. It's a cross product, so the vectors have to form a right-handed system, which means, um, this is a positive direction, this is a positive direction, this is a positive direction. This is like part of how the cross product works.
Okay, it has to be, okay.
Right, and so you have to make that with your right hand, so that means that must be the positive. You can try and you can imagine this, this is positive, you won't be able to make this with your hand to fit the situation, so. Um, okay. So that is number seven. Let's move on now to number nine.
Ri- right-hand rule is kind of tough to get left-hand.
Yeah, I use my left hand too, too often. I don't realize.
Wait, are you left-handed?
Yeah, yeah.
Ah.
So, let's start here. Number nine. A proton, charge plus E, mass MP, of course. A neutron, charge. A neutron, charge plus E mass two MP and an alpha particle, charged, okay, whatever, are accelerated from rest. Through a common potential difference delta V. Each of these particles enter a uniform magnetic field, magnetic field B. With its velocity in a direction perpendicular to B, okay? The proton moves in a circular path of radius RP, in terms of RP, determine the radius RD. Of the circular orbit of the neutron and. The radius for the alpha particle R alpha, okay? So, what we're talking about here is the cyclotron radius and. I need, just need the formula for it, so you know, particles, I guess that if I, some, I guess I'll just explain it quickly. Um, if you're moving like this, right, if this is your velocity of your particle. And the magnetic field is going, let's say, uh, into the page, so if you're going in, if it's into the page, I guess I'll do, I'll do it out of the page, actually. Right, so fingers there, velocity goes, if it's a, let's say it's a positive, positive charge. Um, fingers in curl in the direction of the magnetic field, so force is this way, right? And as it moves, right, as it moves. That field is there, it's always gonna be pointing to some center and so the particle is gonna go in a circle always. So if you're moving perpendicular to a magnetic field, uh, you're gonna go in a circle. Uh, because your force is gonna be perpendicular to both those things, so always pointing to the side. And so now, uh, since we know that, we can talk about these cyclotron radiuses, which is the radius of that circle. And so, uh, first, let's find the cyclotron radius for this proton and then in terms of that, find the rest of them. So the formula for the cyclotron radius is, if I can find it. Is um. I can't find it, let's see where it is, this must be in front of me, just can't see anything on this page. Nope, I guess it's not.
M V over Q B.
N, N V.
Sorry, M V, M V.
M, M V. Q B, like that? But magnitudes, magnitudes maybe?
Yeah, magnitudes, magnitude of velocity and charge, I think, and the field, yeah.
Yeah, okay, makes sense. Okay, so that's the radius of the, of the curvature, so of, of the radius of the circle.
Is V velocity or is it voltage?
Uh, it's velocity, it's velocity.
It's velocity, okay, so.
We will use that potential difference uh in some way, I don't quite know how yet, I'll, I'll figure it out, uh, let me get my notes open here. So we can take a look. Um, we're not quite here yet. Let's see. Okay, that's fine for now, one second, let me just. That's not what we need. Okay, well, for now, let's see what we know here, um, I know the mass, I know the charge, that's fine. Do I know uh radius? Yeah, that's like a variable that we know and then I'll find, uh, how do I find velocity and field? Well, I know the field, that's fine, it'll, I can just say the magnitude of the field, right? But then V, delta V, has to be related to V in some way, so let's see how. So they have a common potential difference, we know delta V, what do we, what equations do we know with delta V in it? We have delta V equals, uh, Q delta V equals U E.
Hall effect formula, that's the only one that I see.
Is that what you're thinking? Yeah. I was trying not to move that far ahead so quickly cuz I, I didn't think it would be that yet, but.
Um, I would suggest using um potential energy to kinetic energy conversion.
Yeah, I was also kind of thinking that.
Then we can find the speed.
So if we say that's how much potential energy it has at the start, then it'll have, what i- what is it again? Um, particles enter a uniform magnetic field with velocity V in a direction perpendicular. Um, accelerated from rest through a common potential difference. Okay, so yeah, so delta, Q delta V, so that means Q delta V, yeah, equals one half M V F squared? Pretty sure. Because it's, yeah, cuz it's saying this is how much potential energy they have at the start, all of it is gonna be converted to kinetic energy. So, yeah, and we can just solve for um the velocity here now, so the velocity, I'll just call it V. Is gonna be the square root of Q delta, two Q delta V. Over, yeah, this was part of some lab I'm re- realizing now, cuz that looks familiar. Um, and I'm pretty sure that's right, two Q delta V over M squared rooted, yep. So there we go, that's our formula for R, so R is M square root two, well, I guess I'll do it like. Root two M. Q delta V in a square root, now that's, that's much worse way of doing it. So, two Q delta V over root M. That's our radius, that is, that's, and it's all in terms of numbers we know, right? It's M, mass of the um proton, so I should be clear, this is for the proton, for the proton, for the proton. And Q of a proton. So. I think that's fine for that, that is the circular, that's the radius, uh, let me just make sure everything's in term, mass, we know, charge, we know, delta V, we know. That's all we need to know. We don't even know, need to know, oh, I missed, I lost the uh Q B.
Yeah, I was just like, what happened to the B field?
Yeah, M P, Q, magnitude of B. There, messy formula, I don't know what's making it messy, but it's messy, okay, anyways, Q P, um. I probably do actually wanna simplify this, so this is um, um, this is just gonna be root M P. Square root, uh, well, it's gonna be root. You know, over root Q P. Times root two delta V over. Um, magnitude of B. So that'll be simpler because this is what's changing, this is not changing, right? So assuming I did the algebra right there, I hope I did, hopefully someone can check that. Um, but the idea is that for part A, oh, let's check the answer, should check the answer, shouldn't I? Nine is, I got.
The mass should be like two M P cuz it's a neutron or whatever.
Well, this is just for the proton for now, this, I'm just finding the pro- RP for the proton and then for, for part A, I'm gonna start part A now. Right, yeah, so I realized there's no answer for this part, you just have to say we got it right. And then from there, we can figure it out, so yeah, RP is this, so now for the neutron. Um, which is also RD, right? What's the difference? Well, it has the same charge, but has twice the mass. So it's gonna be root two times root M P over root Q P. Root two delta V over magnitude of B. In other words, RD is root two RP. There's our answer for part A. Okay, and then for part B, it's an alpha particle, so it's twice the charge and four times the mass. Right, so twice the, twice the charge is gonna give us a root two, uh, sorry, sorry, it's, it's for a alpha particle, so. Twice the charge is gonna be root two in the denominator. Q P and four times the charge is gonna be root four in the numerator. Root M P, sorry, four times the mass, four times the mass. Times root two delta V over magnitude of B. So this is gonna be um, root two, again, root two, yeah. R alpha equals root two RP. And there is our answer for part. So any questions about this?
I didn't even know what deuteron was something that existed.
And neither did I.
Man, this, man, weird particles.
Couldn't you simplify, oh, sorry, couldn't you simplify the deuteron to like? Two M P, uh, two square root M P delta V over square root Q P.
Oh, you mean like, take, take this, take this root two and the, and the root two here, combine it?
Oh, okay. Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, but then you wouldn't be able to equate it to RP, you wouldn't be able to equate, you would, cuz the point is that this is RP. That's what we wanna see, right, and this is RP as well. So that's why we were doing that, yeah. But yeah, good. Okay, that's number nine, so next is number eleven. Okay, number eleven is one electron collides elastically with a second electron initially at rest. It's elastically with a second electron initially at rest, okay, after the collision, the radii of their trajectories are that, 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 that. The trajectories are perpendicular to a uniform magnetic field of that magnitude, okay? Determine the energy in kilo electron volts of the incident electron. Hmm, okay.
Such a weird question.
Yeah, there's a lot to it, but I think, I think I see who.
Zero point zero zero space zero T.
I guess that this just doesn't matter, whatever, it's an extra, zero point zero zero four T is what they probably mean.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, we have two electrons colliding, one has, so one has no. Uh, velocity, so I'll say V I two equals zero. And here, I'll say V I one equals um some value, whatever, V I one. And it's going towards the electron over here, let's figure out. Well, it's moving that way, I don't think they're in an electric field, a magnetic field just yet, doesn't really matter, actually, if they are in a magnetic field just yet. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, but anyways, they'll. Go like this, okay, what we need to do is, is the cyclotron radius, radii, so here we have the first one, R one. That's the first one, the one that was moving, so one was the one that was moving, that's going to be. Um, Q, what was it? Q V or, or M V, M V, I think it was. It's up here. It was M V, yeah, M V over Q B. Right, so um, we know the radius, we know the mass, the charge and the magnetic field. So we can solve for the final velocity, right, we can solve for the final velocity, so V F one. Of the um moving particle, very similarly, we can do R two equals M, so I should be clear, this is, well, they're the same M, whatever it is. M one equals M two equals M equals um mass of electron. Um, and then Q one equals Q two equals negative, uh, equals Q equals negative E. Although we might take absolute value of that, I don't know, we'll see, yeah, we will take absolute value of that, cuz you don't have a negative radius, so, yeah. Um, so here, similarly, we can do magnitude of V F two. Uh, it's Q B, B is the same for all of them and. Again, we, we know everything here except V, so we can solve for the two final velocities and then, do we know the? Do you remember the energy of the incident electron? I guess we say they don't have any potential energy, what would the potential ener- there's just no potential energy? No, but there is a potential energy between the two, but we don't know any distances, I guess. Of the incident electron, I guess we say they have. No potential energy cuz they're colliding, maybe that's what it is, that's they're colliding, so they have no potential energy, I don't know, um, but. Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's what we do, so let's, let's rearrange here, first of all, so the magnitude of V F one. Is going to be R one Q magnitude of B over M, so very similarly, V F two. Is going to be R two Q B over M. Now I know that delta U plus delta K equals zero, right? So that means that U F minus U I uh plus K F minus K I. Equals zero of the whole system, right, of the whole system, so what's the kinetic, well, potential energy, I'm pretty sure we just say there's no potential energy. Because. Why? I don't know, I just think we do. I ju- I just think we, I think we just say there's just no potential energy here. Even though they do, their charges, charges have potential energy. But, uh, maybe just cuz we're at the incident of, uh, at the, uh, determine the energy of the incident electron, oh, no, of the incident electron, yeah. I'm pretty sure we're just looking for this K I of the first electron, so here, if I, if I look here quickly. This is gonna be K F one plus K F, oops, K F two minus K I one minus K I two. Equals zero, what do we know information about? We know information about these two things, right? That's what we know, we can find one half M V squared and then, well, one of these is actually zero, so the second one is not moving to begin with. Right? So if I was looking for information about K I one, well, that's equal to K F one plus K F two. In other words, one half M V I one squared equals one half. Uh, M V F one squared, doesn't matter what order, but one half uh M V. F two squared. And some things cancel. More things than I would expect cancel, actually. Yeah, not actually more, actually, V I one uh is equal to the square root of V F one squared plus V F two squared. And then we can f- plug all this in. I guess I, I guess I'll just find numbers here for these things and then see what happens. So R one, no, you know what, more will cancel if I don't do that. Well, not actually cancel, but they will. Yeah, okay, so do some more algebra, I guess, uh, so it's gonna be R one squared, Q squared, B squared. R one squared, Q squared, B squared over M squared. Right, plus R two squared, Q squared, B squared over M squared, those combine, of course. So it's R squared, Q squared, B squared, so it should be R one, Q squared, B squared. Plus R two squared, Q squared, B squared over M squared in a square root. And this will be. Uh, Q B over M times the square root of. Of R squared plus, R one squared plus R two squared. And that should be right, hopefully, if I did all my algebra right, uh, so Q is. What are we looking for? V I one, so I'm pretty sure we just, yeah, we just take absolute value, so we just say E here, cuz we're not gonna get a negative number otherwise. So I just need E, which is one point six oh two two. Times ten to the negative nineteen, times the magni- mag- magnitude of the magnetic field, zero point zero four four. Um, divided by. Divided by the mass of an electron, which is nine point one oh nine four. Times ten to the negative thirty one. And then it's gonna be times the square root of R one squared plus R two squared, so. R one squared is zero point zero one squared plus zero point zero two four squared. So I get the initial, uh. Oh, wait, what? Hold on, that's the initial kinetic energy, yeah, so the initial kinetic energy in joules is two oh one, two one one. Five eight three point six joules and I wanna convert this to electron volts. Or actually in tequila electron volts. So let's first do uh electron volts, so one electron volt. Electron volt has one point six. Yeah, one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen joules and then I wanna get a kilo, so. Kilo per, just times a thousand or divided, wait. Yeah, one elect- I wanna get rid of electron volt, I want. Yeah, I want kilo electron volt, so one kilo electron volt has a thousand electron volts, so there we go. So answer divided by. One point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen times one thousand. So I get one point two five five eight times ten to the twenty four kilo electron. Volts, how is that? That's negative nineteen, yeah, okay. Electron volts. And let's check our answer. Let's hope it's right, eleven, feel pretty good about it, let's see. Um, eleven. No, no, I probably lost the factor of ten, though, cuz we're not too far. Probably lo- yeah, that's probably all that happened, so let's go through it, let's see what happened. Um, maybe if I plug in, let's see if I did some messed up algebra afterwards. So R one. I guess we have to do something with the, the incident electron. Yeah, there's nothing there and did I solve for the right variable here? Let's see, K F. Let's carry, is K F one plus K F two, K I one plus K R two.
Wait, the variable that you solved for, that was for uh velocity, not kinetic energy?
Yeah, you're right, what was I doing?
So then you would have to uh square that multiplied by uh half times M, right?
Oh, yeah, you're right, okay, good, hopefully that's the, that's wrong, I solved for the velocity of it initially, so yeah, I'm gonna s- take the answer, square it. And multiply it by zero point five times M, uh which is the mass of a proton electron, so. Um, nine point one O nine four times ten to the negative thirty one, and then divide this. Divide this by one point six O two two times ten to the negative nineteen times a thousand. Uh, no, that's still not it.
Did you, did you uh use the two O one, two one one? Five eight three, or did you use the one point?
No, yeah, I did, I did this one, yeah, yeah, I I made sure I did the right, I had the right one, well, I hope so, let's see, I guess I'll try it again manually, but. I do, I did, I did check that. Three, three point six divided by one point six O two two.
Oh, did you convert your your radiuses?
Yeah, I did, I did, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I guess I did do what you said, I don't know how, I I did click answer, like the correct answer, I went back, but yeah, no, no, if we do. If we say, um, this is V, then one half M V squared. Converted to this is one fifteen kilo electron volts, okay, thank you for pointing that out, I, yeah, there you go. So we got the answer now, it was just a, I made the actual mistake and then I made a mistake in my calculator. So any questions about this one, this is a pretty good question, like a pretty long one, just dealing with the energies. But, yeah. Eleven.
Would you like summarize that bit, so you?
Yeah, so I found the two cyclotron radiuses, right, so one and two.
It's just isolated, right, you just move R to the other side and then.
Yeah.
To V to your side, and then you do the U equals K equals zero, or U. Maybe why, why is that, what did you do, U equals K E?
Whereas U equals K E.
Delta U equals, that the K equals zero.
Delta U plus delta K equals zero?
Yeah.
That's conservation of energy, conservation of energy.
Where does the data you come from exactly, or is it just original va- versus uh final?
The delta, yeah, delta U is gonna be, well, U is, there's no potential energy, so we just can't split those out, and yeah, it's gonna be K F minus K I for this. Equals zero.
Okay, and then.
Use that, because K I is the initial kinetic energy of the first one and the initial kinetic energy of the second one. And K F is the final kinetic energy of the first one plus the final kinetic energy of the um second one, so I do that.
Why did you use uh data you, uh there wasn't any data you, but I guess you can start using just.
You you're cutting out a little bit, but yeah, did you say why, why did I not do, why did I say these are zero?
No, I said like, I was a bit confused because like, why would you use them, but I think, cause you don't have that you, but then you can just. If you don't have, they could just see they're zero.
Yeah, just say they're zero, they didn't give it, just so it's it's zero, delta U, the the potential energy doesn't change. Be- it it doesn't change between like before and immediately after the collision, cause they're both still right next to each other, as they move away, they change.
Key, and then the two kinetic energy up from the. Initial ones, and one of them becomes zero, and they expand it.
Yeah, one of them becomes zero, and then I'm, so I want information about K I one, which is what I'm trying to solve for.
Same way to the other side, it's just expanded in some sense, it's just expanded into like the.
Although I didn't actually have to, I should have, I should have not expanded this, I should have just expanded these ones.
Yes, I mean to relate this back to to eleven, this is an elastic collision, which is why we did uh conservation of energy.
Yeah.
Cause we know that like, all the energy is, has to be there still in in the speed.
And okay, they go down a bit. And they expand it again, cause you know, V equals what that.
From up here, I know what V and V one, V F one and V F two are.
Yeah, then you just talk throughout those ones, cause they're constants, the M and whatever. Okay, I think that makes sense. I just want to recap, we just.
Yeah, good, no, it's good, any more questions about it, or?
And, and you, where were those numbers again?
Which ones?
Two hundred and one, two eleven, and then five.
Yeah, well, that's just, I'm just writing the numbers with a big space in between them, it's one number, it's, it's just I.
Ah, it's one number.
That's the velocity, yeah, I just wrote it with too much spacing for some reason, and then I converted it to kilo electron volts.
Do that make sense?
Okay.
And then use the, and then what's the last one, was it one, one over or half an M V squared, what's that for?
Because this what I solved for, I made, this is the mistake I made, I solved for the velocity, not the kinetic energy, I solved for the velocity, so this is in, this is in, um. This is V, right, so then to make that kinetic energy, I had to multiply by one half M and square it. So that that's kinetic energy, right, that's kinetic energy, so the the mistake I made is that I I expanded this one as well. See, I like expand K I into V I like this.
Yeah.
M V I squared, I, if I just didn't do that, I'd I would have no problem at the end here. But to fix that now, I just multiply.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, yes. Okay, so good to move on to question thirteen?
God, angular momentum.
Yeah, that's, well, let's, let's get into it, let's see, um, an electron moves in a circular path perpendicular to a constant magnetic field of magnitude one. Micro, micro milla Tesla. The angular momentum of the electron about the center of the circle is that many kilogram meters per second squared. Determine the radius of the circular path and the speed of the electron. Okay, well.
How, how is this a, a figure's question, this is a angular momentum question?
That's true. I think what we're supposed to do. I think what we're supposed to do, let's see here quickly, it's. Okay, let's start with what we know, okay, ma- magnitude of the magnetic field is zero point zero zero one, or I'll just write one milla Tesla. One, one times ten to the negative three Teslas. Angular momentum about the center of the circle, angular momentum is that, is four times ten to the negative twenty five. Determine the radius of the circular path, um, so what we can do. What equations do we know, okay, angular momentum, I'm gonna have to turn that into. Something, okay, I know that A T equals the, the tangential acceleration in a circle. Is the angular acceleration times R. So if I can find some sort of expression for A T, which I can by doing F equals M A. What are the forces acting on it, well, our forces are F B, right, so F B equals M A. So Q V cross B, B. Equals M A. Um, and that's the same A as up here, the tangential acceleration. Right? Oh, no, that isn't the same A, hold on, F B goes into the. Yeah, 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 F B goes into the circle. We don't have any tangential acceleration.
It's a momentum, right, it's not an acceleration.
Yeah, so it's.
Oh, angular momentum, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Mass times velocity times radius.
Is it?
Yeah, it's gravity times radius is that. So just do angular momentum.
What was even the symbol for angular momentum?
L.
L, yeah.
Yeah, just put up.
So L equals, what was it, what was the, I don't even have it here, I don't.
Mass times velocity times radius.
M V R, mass times.
Wasn't it omega, didn't we use omega for angular?
Yeah, wasn't it omega? Omega, omega, omega is velocity times radius.
Yeah, omega is velocity times.
That's angular frequency we're thinking of.
Yeah, omega is velocity times radius.
Well, no, V is omega, V is omega times radius, omega is V over R. So if this is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, yes, what you said.
No, no, it's just omega, it's mass times omega. Yeah.
Okay. So that is our, eh, we know L, we know M, cause it's an electron. We can find the, the angular moment, uh, the angular speed. And then we can relate that, because we know that the centripetal acceleration is equal to. Um omega squared R, okay, related to the fact that uh this is V squared over R, and we just said that omega was. Sorry, V equals omega R, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna box all the equations that I'm pulling out of nowhere, so, this is an equation that I'm. Pulling out of nowhere.
So basically, they just need, I think they can put one of these questions in though.
Um, I don't know, I'm not really sure.
You think so, you think they're gonna finesse us like this?
Possibly, but this isn't gonna be too hard to solve now, because, yeah, if I combine these two equations, sorry, combine and not equal them. This is gonna be A C equals omega squared R. So that's an important thing, now we know the centripetal acceleration is omega squared R, what else do we know about the centripetal acceleration? We know that it's equal to, this tells us, that the centripetal acceleration is Q over M. V cross B. Right, so I know that Q, Q over M, V cross V, eh, V cross B. B cross B is equal to om- omega squared. R. And so remember here, I was gonna say, this, this, this gives us that omega is equal to M over L. Or. L over M, sorry. Um, so we can find omega, can find the magnitude of omega, so what do we know here? What are we looking for even, determine the radius, so we're looking for a radius, so this is our target, we know this, we know this pretty much. Yeah, we can find them, we we don't know this yet, Q and M we know. And what was the other question, the speed of the electron? So what we can do is we can say that, um, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna work exactly, but. We can say here, someone's got their mic on, could they mean? Thank you, um, Q over M is the magnitude of V times the magnitude of B. Equals omega squared R, magnitude of V is omega R. So Q over M, omega R, magnitude of B equals omega squared R. Oh, R is cancelled, okay. That didn't work, omega, R is cancelled, so uh we can't do that move.
So, excuse me.
I clicked on radius. So can you use something? My bad, my bad.
Yeah. I did the other way, so the, I used the other sheet formula, there was an R equal M V. Like M V, R equal M V over Q times magnetic field.
Cyclotron radius, yeah, R equals.
Yeah.
That's the R we're looking for.
Yeah, so I just used like linear momentum equal to M V R, and I solved for V, and I just sub- submitted there.
Is it a linear momentum, though, I thought it was an angular momentum?
It's angular momentum, yeah, but I think he means, he means angular, yeah.
Okay, I meant angular momentum, yeah, so I solved, yeah, solved for V and I just submitted there.
That seems to make more sense than what I was saying, so yeah, let's give that a try, um, L, like L over M R. What R is that, though, that's the same cyclotron radius?
Yeah, yeah, the same thing.
So L over M R. Okay, so R equals M L over M R. So masses cancel, I realize it's a Q B here.
So R.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's gonna be R squared equals L over Q B.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Okay. That seems to work for me, yeah, okay, so do we know the magnetic field? Yeah, we do, okay, good, so that'll work, and then I'll erase all this, uh, four times ten to the negative twenty five, so square root. Of four times ten to the negative twenty five. Over Q B. Q is an electron, so Q, but I have to make it positive, so. Yeah, Q is just gonna be E, so one point six O two two times ten to the negative nineteen. Yep, uh then times B, B is times one times ten to the negative three. So I get zero point zero five. Uh meters, I guess it's meters. Uh, yeah, five centimeters, we're good, that is A.
Where did you get the square root from, is that a square root?
Yeah, that's a square root, because um the the R here and the R here is gonna make an R squared.
Oh, good.
So there we go, that's part A, and then part B is to find the velocity, the speed. So I think we just use V equals omega R for this.
No, he just sub R in the equation that he did.
Oh, right here, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so then we just say here that this is uh four times ten, it was four times ten to the negative twenty five, yeah. Four times ten to the negative twenty five over the mass of a electron, zero point zero five. So four times ten to the negative twenty five over the mass of an electron, which is. Not, oops, nine point one O nine four. Times ten to the negative thirty one, times zero point zero five. So this is uh eight. Seven, eight, two, one, three, seven point one three three, what am I looking for, V, meters per second, is it that big? Times ten to the six, six, yeah, eight point seven nine, times ten to the six is fine. So there we go. Let's erase everything that doesn't matter here, uh, this doesn't matter, this, oops, whoop.
Make you go. Wait, erase everything, and then can we take another look at it?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this uh, what was that for?
Is this what?
Like what, what? Why is this, is this the one we had to use like last semester? For.
Oh, yeah, linear, yeah, yeah, this, this equation is from last semester.
No, no, I'm seeing the software you're using, it's the one we had to use last semester.
Oh, the same software, yeah, like the one note?
Yeah, it's on, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's the same I've been using this whole time, I mean, I used it a little bit at the beginning of last semester, I used Photoshop, but now I use one more.
Photoshop, geez.
Yeah, that's why I used to do my lessons on. So. Let's.
Wait, so I'm combining the one for angular momentum, the one for uh, the one that spins?
Yeah, we're com- well, we're combining the cyclotron radius with just this uh angular momentum formula.
And we saw for V and I put that into, and for V, we just put that one on, and that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
This makes way more sense, cause it was very much like stop.
Yeah, yeah.
What, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that is question thirteen done, then, let's see question fifteen. Whoa, question fifteen looks difficult, so let's see this one. So, let's see how this goes. You are working as a medical assistant at a proton beam facility where high-speed protons are used to bombard cancer cells. The protons are accelerated with a cyclotron, which you find very interesting because of your background in physics. You are explaining this to a patient who has some familiar, who has some familiarity with cyclotrons, she asks, how many rev- revolutions does a proton make? In the cyclotron before it reaches its exit kinetic energy? You are taken aback both by the high quality of her question and the fact that you've never thought of such a question before. You will tell her you will try to get her an answer before she finishes her treatment today. When you are finished preparing for a treatment, you go into the cyclotron room and look at the machine. Only three numbers are available on the machine labeling, the exit energy, so, I'll even, well, I'll just highlight it, I guess. Exit energy is that much, the radius at which the protons exit are equals that. And the accelerating potential difference between the Ds. Okay, um, you go back to the patient prepared to give her, her, her a total number of times the protons go around the cyclotron before exiting. Okay. So what we have to do, I guess, is to figure out, so we need to find the total number of times the protons go around the cyclotron before exiting. So we need to figure out.
Energy, like, what is exiting energy, like?
How much energy it has when it leaves the machine, so here we have.
Well, how do you even relate that, like, what even is that, how do you even?
Well, that's gonna be the total energy of the system, right? That'll be the total energy, so it'll be the kinetic, I guess it'll just be kinetic energy. So that'll be.
We're setting the energies, not like some energy, it's only just like.
It's not necessarily the total kinetic energy of the system, but that's the, if, because it's, it's the exit energy, that's how. Much kinetic energy that the proton has leaving the cyclotron. But you have to figure out how many times it has to spin around through the potential difference to gain that much kinetic energy.
Yeah.
Yes, so, uh, so but in this case, it's a total kinetic energy. So basically, in, in this case, you just have to find out how many, how many times it was spin until it has that much kinetic energy.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, yeah, so we say, we say that we know that the final kinetic energy is going to be two hundred and fifty. Mega electron volts. Okay, so that means that one-half MVF squared is two hundred and fifty mega electron volts. So we can find the final velocity, it's a, eh, what, what? What particle is it? Protons, it's a proton. So, it's gonna have that, we can figure out the velocity of this thing as it leaves, and then we have to ask, okay, well, how many cycles does it have to go through? For it to, um. Have this amount of, um. Kinetic energy to get this velocity, so I think the first step is to find the velocity, so let's, maybe let's do that. Uh, it's gonna be, you know, I'll do it in terms of variables for now. So I'll say KF equals K, the big K that they gave us, so K, so VF is. Two K over, well, I hope the K doesn't confuse us, but, yeah, it probably won't, K is that thing right there. Um, over M in a square root, so we know the final velocity now. And we have to ask, how many times, uh, do you, so we have a circle, okay, let's draw the cyclotron, how many times does it have to go around the cyclotron? With radius R like this. Right, to get this much uh, velocity. Well, from the delta V, delta V equals Q, um, sorry, Q delta V equals delta U. That's one equation with V, um, but I think. It's accelerated, let me see this for a second, accelerated with cyclotron.
What does between the Ds mean?
I think just, I think it just mean, I don't know, but I think it just means like, that's the, that's the voltage it's experiencing.
Can't we find like the period of the thing, and then just. See how many periods there is, how many, like, yeah.
Uh.
Well, yeah, I'm find the to- the total time, we can find the period and total time, can we, like, can't we do that?
We have.
And then divide them by the other and see how many. How many periods there is. Because period is one revolution, right?
It's, yeah, but.
It's ju- we're just talking about energy, I don't think we can find that.
Well, okay, I was just, yeah, I, I was just wondering.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying to see if you go back to, uh, something. We don't know if it starts at rest, which is something, the, we don't know if the proton starts at rest, but maybe do we assume that? No, that doesn't make sense also for a proton to start at rest.
I have an idea and I have no idea this could be correct, but we can try it out. Because it's accelerated through a potential difference, we know how much that potential difference is, and we know with the charge, because it's just, it's just a proton. Um, we know how to find like, potential ener- like, how much potential energy it, um. Either, I guess you could say loses or converts into kinetic energy, where every time it goes through the potential difference, because it's gonna gain. Q delta V, um, it's right, I guess it's either gonna lose or gain Q delta V. Uh, amount of energy every time it goes around the potential difference, right? I don't know how a cyclotron works, which is why I'm like, I have no idea how we're supposed to solve this question. It could be so, I don't know if between the Ds means anything, because it mentions it specifically.
I sent the picture to the chat, maybe you can look at it, I don't understand it, maybe you'll understand it.
Sure, okay, I'll take a look, let me just try one thing quickly, let me just.
It's just a picture of the cyclotron, so we can see what they're saying, I guess.
Oh, okay, that's probably.
Yes, I guess it starts on the center and it starts spinning according to like the magnet.
Yeah.
As it reaches the exit of the thing and then, it's all like spinning more, it just kinda exits the thing. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I see, yeah, it's.
Maybe, so maybe when it has this, that radius, that's when it exits. So like, you just have to have this, like, when the radius is that, and that speed's mad.
Hold on, the, yeah, the radius is changing, yeah.
Yeah, when that radius is mad and that speed's mad, that's when it exits, you know what I mean? That's why it says R equals eighty-five, uh, zero point eighty-five M, so it just. So it just keeps needs to inc- the kinetic energy gets increasing. And the radius keeps increasing until a point where it reaches that critical radius, I guess.
Yeah, I see, I see.
I would consult with Slater to see if there's, if we're supposed to use equations that we know, or if there's new equations that have to do with cyclotrons. Because they do go over cyclotrons in the textbook, we just, I don't think we go over it in class or whatever.
Yeah, really, okay, sure, let's take a look. What this says here. Okay, thank you, someone, Marco put the Slater solution, so let's take a look. So, consider a cyclotron with kinetic energy, that's, okay, exit radius of, is it the exact same question? I think it is. Uh, finish up in that, yeah, between these, using these values. Uh, we need to find the number of turns the proton makes before it exits the cyclotron, the kinetic energy of the charged particle is increased every time it comes. In the gap between the Ds, where in every turn the proton comes in the gap between the Ds two times, yeah, okay. Therefore, the increase in energy corresponding to one revolution is delta K equals two QV. So let's understand that for, okay, the kinetic energy of the particle is increased every time, so that, yeah, so it's adding some kinetic energy, because every time you. Right, because. I guess we're assuming it starts at rest, it never said that, but I think we're, we have to assume it starts at rest. So, it starts at rest, and remember that Q delta V is, delta V is de- that's a V. Is delta U. Yeah?
So, yeah, I think your assumption is right, because in the, in the next question, like, in the next question, they already asked us to. Consider it starting from speed near the rest. Like, there is another cyclotron.
I see, yeah. Okay, yeah, so then, yeah, we're starting, we're starting at, yeah, it's gonna start at no kinetic energy, no energy there. So then, every time it goes through, right, it's gonna gain this potential energy. But, um, since it goes between the gaps twice. Every time it does a full revolution, it's gonna gain, in kinetic energy, it's gonna gain two times this, two Q delta V. Right? So. Um. Then they say let N be the number of turns that the proton makes before it exits the cyclotron. So the exit energy is K max, which is N times delta K. Okay, substitute from the thing above, so two N QV. Then solve for N, substitute the givens, and that's everything, yeah. So every time it goes through, it gains this much, how many times it's gonna go through, right? Is what, yeah, how many times it's gonna go through, it's gonna go through N times. Right, and N times delta K is gonna be that maximum energy, K max. Right, so solve for N here, it's gonna be N. Equals K max. Over, uh, delta K. And then I just say that up here, well, delta K was two Q delta V, so K max. Over what, K max. Over two Q delta V. And plug in all our numbers there. And there we go, that'll be it, I mean, I can just see the numbers there, so, I'm not gonna do it, but. See the number right there. So. Would I have been able to figure that out? Probably not, I don't, I've never seen a cyclotron before, so, I don't really know, but. That's the idea, I guess thi- this is an important thing, for all, if you're, if you're gonna do a cyclotron question. That, this is the cyclotron equation, I'm pretty sure, I mean, that's like, the most important thing, because every time, this will be true for all cyclotrons. So, if you have a cyclotron question. Do that. K, delta K equals two Q delta V.
Didn't we use the N thing, the N, the N number in our labs, but that was given number, right?
Um, that, that N was the number of something, was that the number of turns?
Number of loops of the current outside the.
Of the coil, right?
Coil that was creating the magnetic field at the electron.
Yeah, yeah, it was something slightly different. So, yeah. Okay, let's move on to seventeen. So seventeen is another cyclotron question, so, there we go. So, a cyclotron, oh, it gives a figure this time, twenty-eight point sixteen. Oh, is this twenty-eight point sixteen, this picture here? No, that's not twenty-eight point sixteen. Um. Okay, let's see, can I, can I find twenty-eight point sixteen? Could someone try to find that in the textbook and see if they could send it to me, because I'm gonna lose my page here, or, you know, I could, I could do it, nevermind.
We could, yeah, I think it's the same, is the same picture they said, the same, like, they're just showing a cyc- a cyclotron over there.
Yeah.
And that's figure.
Yeah, well, here's, okay, I found it now, so this is the, this is the cyclotron. May as well show it. So. That's the cyclotron, and that's the image from the question. So. Yeah, and that's what it looks like, I guess, so a cyclotron designed to accelerate protons has an outer radius, so I guess that's maximum radius. Of that, the protons are emitted nearly at rest from a source at the center, and are accelerated through six hundred volts each time. And they're excited through six hundred volts each time, they cross the gap between the Ds. The Ds are between the poles of an electromagnet where the field is zero point eight tesla. Find the cyclotron frequency for the protons in this cyclotron, so the cyclotron frequency. Okay. Uh, what is, does that mean? What does that mean? Does that mean?
I think, I think we didn't cover cyclotrons in class, I don't know if this is gonna be like a.
Okay, I know what you mean, yeah, if we need another equation now, then yeah, I, I would agree that this isn't necessary.
I think, in young, we just had one slide about it.
Do need another equation now.
In young, we just had one slide about it, but.
Oh, really? And, and there wasn't like math, was there an equation with it, or just talked about it?
Um, let me see. There isn't, she, she just have the equation for the period and the equation for the radius of it, and that's it.
Oh, but there was an equation for the period?
Yeah, and let me, let me send you, let me send you this. I think, oh, there is an equation for kinetic.
Oh, okay.
Let now I'm sending it.
Oh, here, Marco also sent it, but yeah, see if, is it the same thing as this? Uh, oops.
Uh, well, I can't see it, is it on the discussion?
I put on my screen now. Oh, you said this too, yeah, okay, good, let's just put both these here. Well, if a professor went over it, then I think it might be, I guess, but Springer didn't go over it, so, that's also an important thing. But.
And it's okay.
Yeah, you think so? Well, okay, so then what, what would the period, the. The frequency be? Well, it would be the, the frequency, the cyclotron frequency. Just from, from this, well, here, right there, is what it would be. Well, that's the psych, yeah, the angular speed cyclotron frequency is QB over M. Uh, so it's E over M times the magnetic field, so that's not gonna be hard to find, so I'll just do that quickly. E over M, so E is, uh, uh. Can I, never find this, one point. Six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen, times the magnetic field, which was zero point eight. Over M, mass of a proton, it's a proton, right? Protons, yeah, I think it has to be proton, um. Mass of a proton is one point six.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Go for it, go for it.
I think you're solving for omega, I think you're solving for omega, not the frequency, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Omega, so it's just two pi that.
Um. Well, I'm just.
Two pi that.
I'm just looking at this formula here. And it says cyclotron frequency, cyclotron frequency is angular speed, the cyclotron frequency is this.
Yeah, if you look to the corner of the picture that I said.
Yeah, here.
Can you see the, the period, the period, yeah, it's just one over that, I think.
Yeah, but then this is, this would be, I, I understand, because this is not, this is angular frequency.
Uh, we already know the relationship between, uh, period, which is, it's, it, T is equal to two pi over W. So I think that they, because, uh, and then they use the equation on the corner, the, for T, T is equal to two pi. M over QB, and then that's how they found W. Is it like QB over?
Yeah, yeah.
Think that's what they did.
Seven point six, yeah, this is gonna be. Seven. Times to the seven. Yeah, seven point six six times ten to the seven is right for this, so this, this is what we need, we need this angular frequency is the actual, so it's not just one over that. The, the actual cyclotron frequency is, uh, omega.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Find the speed at which the protons exit the cyclotron, that's gonna be, um. Uh. Speed at which they exit the cyclotron. Let's see.
That has to do with the final kinetic energy.
Yeah, right, so.
Whatever, uh, kinetic energy, does it say in the question what that is?
Well, here is one, I see that equation here, one-half MV squared, Q squared, B squared, R squared over two M. Right here. That's everything we need. Yeah, so the one-half and the two cancel, and then this is over M squared in a square root, so. There, that's the final velocity, QB R over M, R probably is the maximum radius of the thing. Q is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I also was thinking, like, didn't we say that? Uh, free, free velocity is omega over R, can we just divide that by the, by the radius? The seven point six.
Yeah, or actually it's multi- um, I'm, I'm just about to multiply it by the radius, actually. Because you see how omega was QB M, so this is QB R over M, so I'm just gonna multiply it by the radius, because omega, cause. Yeah, omega R is V, V equals omega R. So I just need to multiply that, that, this by R.
No.
Right, so zero point. Don't worry, don't worry, you're doing good. So, yeah, I get twenty-six point, V equals twenty-six eight two one four seven five. Uh, meters per second. Two point six eight times ten to the seven, six, seven, yeah. That's fine, that's correct. Maximum kinetic energy, yeah, go for it.
I was gonna say, uh, can you go up to the picture of the cyclotron?
Yeah.
I sort of say like, uh, we call that, what's, are, like, the cyclotron radius? Makes a lot more sense now, because we know that as this velocity increases, the cyclotron radius would increase. So the way they control the speed of the proton coming out of the cyclotron, is that as it gains speed, it's. It, the path it takes, is the radius that it has for its path is larger and larger and larger.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Gets to a point where it can move out of, like, there's a tube that opens up.
Yeah.
Puts it out.
That makes sense, yeah, that does make sense. So, yeah, Springer really didn't go through this, but anyways, we're here. Uh, that's our final velocity, so that's for part B, this was for part A. For part C, we need the kinetic energy, which is just one-half MV squared, so I just take answer times one-half. Uh, or answer squared. Times one-half, times M, which is the mass of a proton, which is one point six seven two six. Times ten to the negative twenty-seven, so I get six po- six times ten to the negative thirteen. And the right que- question is this, seventeen? Seventeen, yeah, seventeen. Mega electron volts, wait a second, what? Two, two, six, eight, two, one. Two, two, six, eight, two, one, four seventy five. Squared. Times a half, times. The mass of a proton, which is one point six. Seven two six. Times ten to the negative twenty seven, yeah, that makes sense, actually, that the power, but how is it? Oh, electron volts, this is in electron volts, okay, I see. So I need to down the, I need a, it's in mega electron volts. Yeah, so in joules, I get six point oh one six times ten to the negative thirteen. Um, one electron volt says how many, divide this by um, one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen. Jewels per electron volt, right, joules per electron volt. And then. Or no, sorry, uh, yeah, joules per electron, it's joules, there you go. And then this will be. Cause this is gonna be converting. I wanna get electron volts, I wanna put joules, yeah. So answer divided by one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen. This is in electron volts, so I get, yeah, three. Mega is ten to the six, so it's three point seven five five. Um, times ten to the six electron volts, which is mega electron. Yes, we're good. So that's that. Now, how many revolutions does a proton make in the cyclotron? For that, I guess we'll use this. Or this. Number of revolutions is K max over two Q delta V. Number of revolutions is K max over two Q delta V. So it's gonna be our. Um, does that have to be in joules, the last thing, probably? Yeah, I think it has to be in joules, or does it not matter? QV, yeah, it doesn't matter, actually, I think I can just do this. So answer divided by two times uh, one point six oh two two. Times ten to the negative nineteen, times delta V, which was six hundred. So I get. Not the answer, okay.
You might have to use actual joules.
Okay, I'll try that. Yeah, actually it would matter, I don't know why that would matter, to six point. Oh, one six times ten to the negative thirteen. Three. Yeah, that's right now, okay, so three point, three point thirteen times ten to the three. Revolutions, oops, revolutions. There we go. And now finally, E, for what time interval does the proton accelerate? So how long is it in there for, I guess? Um, and then. Well, I guess we just get the period and multiply that by the N. Right, so time. Is gonna be N times the period. So we know N and we know, so so N times, and then the period is two pi M over QB. Two pi M over QB. So. Answer times. Two pi times M, which is mass of a proton, one point six seven two six. Times ten to the negative twenty seven. Over QB, Q is E, one point six oh two two times ten to the negative nineteen, times B, which was. Zero point eight. And that's gonna be two point five seven times ten to the negative four, yeah. Two point five seven times ten to the negative four uh seconds. That's for E. Okay, so this is very useful. I don't have any of these in my notes, the cyclotron stuff, so I probably will add that. The cyclotron, these ones, these formulas, uh so the formulas that I would add and that are gonna be useful probably are. Well, this is just a cyclotron radius, which is fine, that's, we know that, that's what we know from Springer, period. Uh, this kinetic energy thing down here. Um, I guess technically that, although we can combine that with a few other things, but still, it's good to know, you know, cyclotron frequency, so you don't have to think about it. Add this I would add. And this I would add, so one, two, three, four, five, six, well, this one's already there, so five equations about cyclotrons. Probably all good to know. So, yeah. Okay, any questions about this, what I just did there? That was number seventeen, I'm pretty sure, seventeen? Any other questions?
Wait, can I see what you got for E?
B?
Uh, E, E. Alright, thank you.
Do you mind going back up to eight?
Yeah.
So did you? Did you, did you just plug in for it?
Yeah, this is the, this is, this is the equation, yeah, that's all I did, I just plugged everything into this.
Okay, yeah, cause like I had no idea what was going on, cause you know the formulas.
Yeah.
Okay, and then B. B, you just rearrange the kinetic, did you just rearrange the kinetic energy one?
That's right.
Right, okay, cool. Interesting, interesting, okay, cool, thanks.
No problem. Okay, next is number twenty one. We're not talking about cyclotrons anymore, talking about magnetic force acting on a current carrying conductor. Which is good stuff, um. Let me just see something here, that's cyclotron. So. Okay. This will probably be Hall effect stuff, I'm pretty sure, so let's see. Let's see, okay, so a wire care- well, wire, okay, wire carries a steady current of two point four amps, a straight section of the wire is that many me- that many meters long. And lies along the X axis within a uniform magnetic field of that. If the current is in the positive X direction, what is the magnetic force on the section of wire? Okay. So we have to, for this one, I'll draw it first and then we'll see what's happening, so uh, we have a. Uh, long on the X axis, we have the wire, so I'll draw the green, green is the wire. Right, there's our wire, uh, that's not straight though, should be on the X axis, so there we go, do the better. So there's the wire. The current is going in the positive X direction. And the magnetic field is in the K hat direction. So again, I'm just gonna put, well, no, I guess I'll put K hat this time. Uh, I'll say positive K hat is this way. Towards us. Towards us off the screen. Um, that's our B field. So if current is going this way. Then and the. It's in the K hat direction. Lies within a uniform magnetic field, if the current is in the positive direction, what is the magnetic force on the section of wire? Let me find magnetic force on a section of wire.
Uh, it's just a, it's a cross product, the same as before, I think it's FB is I times L cross B.
Oh, yeah.
From that for me, if they want.
I have it here now, yeah, force on current, current, I see, yeah, F.
The difference is you don't flip your hand, like, it it's just I, so whatever the direction of I is, there's no like hand flipping or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's true, okay, there we go, so, uh, wait, what's L? Oh, L is the direction and magnitude, yeah, yeah, so it's it's in the direction of and has magnitude of the wire. That's what L is, so. If I do this, the, well, let's just do the cross product. I'll do it magnitudes, I guess. Yeah, I'll do it magnitudes, cause I know the angle between them, so it's it's okay, so I. At magnitude of L times the magnitude of B sine of the angle between them, sine of theta. So what are these angles? Well, I, L is um, the length of the wire. B is the magnetic field that they give us, and the angle between them is. Uh, ones on the X axis, ones on the, yeah, the positive K hat axis, so it's sine of ninety, which again is one. Don't have to check this time, I know that much, um, hopefully, and so I is two point four. Times the length of the wire, zero point seven five, times the magnetic field, one point six.
Where did you get this formula from?
From my notes. There we go.
Cause isn't the formula for magnetic field like, yeah, is it down Q? B minus B, or is there like two versions of it?
This is for a point, this is like the force on a point charge. This is the force on a length of wire.
Ah, is there different?
Yeah.
And L is just the length, right, L is just the length.
That was just the length, it's in the direction of the. Like of the current, I guess, is in the direction of the current? Yeah, direction of the current, that's right.
So then it's a wire, how can some be being?
Wait, shouldn't it be in like the J hat direction or something, like perpendicular to both? How could it be the same direction as current?
Wha- what are we talking about, force or L?
Oh, my bad, I'm talking about force, I thought you were talking about.
L, L is in the same direction as current, force will be, well, let's see, okay, so velocity is that, current is that way, this way, so it's down. Force is down. Uh, sorry, force is down. This was number twenty one. Negative J hat, yeah, that makes sense, negative J hat, two point eight eight, yep, that's great. Okay, so there we go. Oh, yeah, what'd you say?
Like, how did you know that B sticks out of the product?
How did, you're cutting out a little bit, or I can't, can't quite hear you.
Wait, can you hear me now?
I hear, I think I hear you, yeah.
It's like, how do you know which direction is B, cause it just said?
It says K hat, I just decided, I just decided that this way was K hat. So what, relative to that, like if I'm saying this is the, this is the X axis, this is the Y axis and. Coming out towards me is the Z axis, then it's going in the negative Y direction. The force is in the negative Y direction.
Yes, but so, but then could you have chosen it to be towards like act like into the page or something?
Uh, yeah, if I chose it into the page, it would go.
It could go up.
Up, but that would up would then be the negative Y direction. No matter what, and it doesn't matter how you set it up, it'll go in the negative Y direction, it just happens to be that the way I drew the picture, down is the negative Y direction. But you could do it a different way, draw it any way you want, the answer will be negative Y, in the negative Y direction, so.
And since it's K and L is like towards X, it's always gonna be.
Since it's K.
Since.
Cause of the cross product, cause of the cross product, it's it's in the.
Yeah, what I'm saying since, cause we know it goes, um, the wire lies in the X axis.
Yeah.
The magnetic, like B, the magnetic field is in the K direction, so it's gonna be sine ninety, no matter what.
Yeah, it'll be sine ninety, no matter what, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Ninety degrees between the vectors, yeah. Okay, um, so there's that, uh, twenty one is done, any questions about this one? Okay, uh, twenty five is next. Uh, so let's see, twenty five is next. So a wire having a mass per unit length of that carries a two amp current horizontally to the south. What are the direction and the magnitude of the minimum magnet- magnetic field needed to lift this wire vertically? Um. Okay, I don't know what to the, to the south doesn't mean anything, I I guess that'll help us with directions at the end, but. Otherwise, it doesn't really mean much, ooh, someone's robot.
Cool.
Okay, I don't, yeah, okay, I think it's gonna. Um, but. So a wire having this math, so that means it's a, what was the, it was linear mass density was mu. Is. Yeah, mu was. Yeah, was mass per length, right, mass per length is gonna be zero point five. Okay, um, a two amp current, I equals two A. Horizontally to the south, so horizontally, there's a wire here again. This way is south and the current goes that way, okay, the magnitude of the magnetic field. Minimum, direction and magnitude of minimum magnetic field needed to lift this wire vertically. So we wanna lift it, so we want the force to go this way, we want the force to go up, so. Uh, let's figure out what, so the forces go up, velocity is this way, so magnetic field has to go into the page, so it has to go, if that's south, then has to go. East, so directions east, let's just check that quickly, but directions east is my answer. Yep, so A is east, so that means the magnetic field. Is gonna go into the page, right? And now, what is the minimum strength needed to lift this? Well, what does it have to counteract? It has to counteract gra- counteract gravity. Right? So we don't know how long the wire is.
Um, your length is gonna cancel out.
Length is gonna cancel out, okay.
Because otherwise you'd have to, so that we know.
Yeah, okay, so then we know that, okay, so, yeah?
Oh, yeah, uh, when they say south, I think they mean the positive X direction. Cause if you looked at it.
Yeah.
If you drew it, yeah, I think.
Okay, I don't think it really matters, though, we'll get the same answer, they want directions in terms of north, south, east, west, so we we do like that, right? So what are the forces acting on it, right, so we wanna see, wh- when is it in equilibrium, I guess, so that's the minimum, that would be the minimum force. So when does the force of? Yeah, when, when does the force of gravity equal the electric force? On the wire, so force of gravity is MG, mass of the wire times G. Uh, then the force of on the wire is going to be, yeah, um. Current. Times length. Times magnetic field, times the sine of the angle between them, which is ninety. Which is one. So MG is, another way to write M is, another way to write M. Is mu times length, so mu times length, G equals IL. Be sine, well, sine of ninety is one. Luckily, we get L's cancel here, and we're just solving for, uh, oh, force, magnitude of the force, so. Um. Oh, no, magnet ma- ma- minimum magnetic field, not the force, field, there we go, so we're looking for the field here, so B. Is equal to mu G over I, the current, which is just gonna be, so mu is. Zero point five times nine point eight one. Divided by.
The mass density, it's in grams per centimeter, you gotta convert it.
Yeah, thank you, so this is uh, zero point five grams per centimeter, grams per centimeter. So I want it to be kilo- kilograms per meter, I think I want it to be kilograms per meter, yeah. So, uh, well, centimeters turns into meters and one meter is a hundred centimeters and. I want kilograms, one gram, there's a thousand, one kilogram, there's a thousand grams. So, uh, well, I can just. Simplify this a little bit, two zeros, two zeros, I'm just dividing by ten, so zero point five divided by ten is just gonna be zero point zero five, of course. So it's zero point zero five kilograms per meter. So thank you for that, so then it's going to be now, um, zero point zero five times nine point eight one over I, I was two. So I got that, the magnetic field has to have zero point two four five Tesla. And that's right.
Is that the direction is to the north, not out of the page, oh, if you consider it south in the page, so north is out of the page, right?
The south is to the right, south is to the right here, so it's it's into the page, the direction is into the page. Cause you take the direction of the, direction of the, um, current is your fingers. And you curve your hand into the direction of the me- well, sorry, your your thumb is the direction of the force, so we know it goes like this. So the way your finger is curved is the direction of the magnetic field into the page. Which would be east.
The south is. South in your paper is to the, to this direction, okay?
So this would be.
Yeah, I see, so it's into the page, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so east is that way and this one would be west, like that, right? Yeah, don't worry, it's good, you you figured it out, um, and there you go, that's twenty five done. Okay, um, let's do twenty seven? It's seven o'clock, I didn't mean to take a break before seven o'clock, but. We'll see, we'll do, let's 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 finish twenty eight, uh, we're gonna take a break at eight o'clock, of course, um. We'll see, we'll do, let's, let's, let's finish twenty eight, uh, we're gonna take a break at eight o'clock, of course, um, but we'll see after that. Uh, so twenty seven is next. Uh, do I need the picture for it? Yeah, I do. Okay, so. A strong magnet is placed under a horizontal conducting ring of radius R that carries current I as shown in this figure. Okay. If the magnetic field B makes an angle theta with the vertical at the ring's location, what are the magnitude and the direction of the resulting magnetic force on the ring? Okay, let's take a look at if I have any information about this. No, this would be twenty nine, okay, so. Length necessary wire.
Is this just a, a, a cross product?
Magnitude, yeah.
This theta, there's the B, there's the current.
So do you, you think I, you think I just do L I cro- well, I L cross B?
We don't know L, oh, I guess we can get L from, cause it's a circle.
It's a circle, right, yeah, so. F equals I, yeah?
Uh, this the distant from the center of the circle formula, right?
For what? To, to find what?
Um, to find the B field.
Oh, I think you're, I think you're thinking of, I think you're thinking of, uh, like, chapter twenty nine, there's like a formula. For the center, yeah, to find the magnetic field at the center of the circle, but we don't want, we don't need, like, we don't know anything about the magnetic field at the center of the circle, we care about the magnetic field at the ring itself.
Oh, I see.
You're thinking of the B O sub R law, which is, we're gonna talk about that later, but yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think, I, I think, um, yeah, you're right, this is what we do, so I carries current I, L cross B, so it's gonna be I. Magnitude of the length, times the magnitude of B, and sine of the angle between them. So L is just gonna be, L is the circumference, which is two pi R, so the answer is gonna be. Two pi I L B sine theta. Those are all numbers we know, so, two pi I. Oh, L, sorry, L is gone. So two pi R I B, yeah. Sine theta, good, that's it. And what is the direction of the resulting magnetic force on the ring? So current, like I'm, I'm kind of, I'm imagining right here. So, current is going that way. Uh, force is, well, field is going up, so. I guess the for, like, kind of, like. From, let's say from heat. Like up and in, kind of pointing at something in the middle there. Where this angle, our. This angle is theta. Is that angle theta or is that angle theta? No, I think, I think this angle is theta. Cause as that went, that would go fly, yeah, that's theta, or, I don't know, but up away from the magnet, oh wait, up away from the magnet? What?
It's moving up, like up away from the magnet.
But wouldn't, wouldn't away mean that way? Oh, away from the magnet, mag, uh, ma- yeah, yeah.
Moving up.
Yeah.
As you go around the circle, like, any horizontal force would probably cancel, so you just move it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, there we go, that's that, that's twenty seven, uh, let's look at forty three.
Quite sorry, before you move on. Uh, so like, how is theta the angle between length and the field? Is it, it looks weird on the diagram, I don't understand it.
Yeah, well, for any one, like, of the length vectors, like, if you had to add to make a length vector, it would go something like this. Right, and then the magnetic field is, yeah, hold on, that's true, magnetic field would be going up and out like that, this angle. Is theta. Yeah, that seems like a ninety degree angle. Um. Let's see.
Ninety minus.
Isn't it perpendicular at every point then?
And. Let me see something here, the answer was sign. The angle between those two things would, yeah, that would be. So then our L vector is not wrong, but. Hmm. Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't see how that would, yeah, the angle between them is ninety, not theta.
Would it not be like ninety minus theta?
Why, why?
Um, if you have like, so for example, where you have like the black line drawn, uh, you have current pointing, I guess, out of the screen towards us, and then. The B field is at, like some, yeah, for, yeah, for example, and then you have like the B field pointing up and away, right? Uh, at some angle theta from like, I guess, the Y axis, you could think about it.
Yeah.
So then, the one, would the angle between them not just be like ninety minus, or? I guess it. Yeah, I, I don't know, actually.
The angle between them would be like from here to here, like this green line that I'm drawing, like from here to here. Right, but on a three D, so that's like ninety, that should be ninety, because this is coming. Yeah, it should be ninety, because it, they don't give us information about how. That's moving. But also.
I'm thinking about like the angle between the B field to the horizontal, you know what I mean?
You're thinking to, you're thinking to this, to the, uh.
Does anyone have the actual answer to this question?
Yeah.
But we need the L here, yeah, I'm gonna look on slide now.
Yeah.
Did someone share it or?
Uh, let's, I don't know, I don't have it yet.
It was twenty seven. Oh, it's a long one. They, they have some picture, no, they have, it's only, like, they have some.
Yeah.
Drawing and sketches. But that actual answer is short.
Hey, yeah, could you send it? Oh, you did now? Oh.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Well, we got the direction, right? Um. But, let's see. What's going on here?
Do you want the explanation?
What's at the top, yeah, what did I miss at the top here?
Okay.
Could you send that to you? Um, so F net is the integral of D F B sine theta, why is that, why is the integral F net? Sine theta is the X component, I mean, sorry, sine theta is the Y component of F B, so the integral of F B sine theta.
It's saying the force at every point around the circle, but we got the right answer anyway. If two pi R I.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah, two par, two pi R I B, so the answer's fine. Um, that's probably not the best way to do it, but. F B is I L B sine theta. Yeah, I don't know why they do it like this, magnitude, part B is that, so part A is. This, oh, they sent a picture. Yeah, this is more complicated than we need to do, for sure, we don't need to do any kind of integration, like derive a formula by integration, uh, so, we got the right formula. I just, that doesn't really, it doesn't make sense, because the angle between them isn't theta. But. Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't really know what else to say. Definitely, we don't have to go through, thank you for sending it, but we don't have to go through all this, because we're not gonna have anything like this at all on the, on the test, so.
I think that's the general case, like, just in general, like, that's how you would do it, like, you know how we have, uh. Like, you know how you explained like the general cases and then this is like more specific, I think. Like, uh, what you did was right, it's just like, I think they were like over.
Yeah.
I think they're just telling like how they came to that conclusion, but we already know they're like.
Maybe that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess so, okay, well, let's move on to forty three, so. A proton having an initial velocity of that enters a uniform magnetic field of that with the direction perpendicular to the proton's velocity. It leaves the fi- field-filled region with velocity that determine the direction of the magnetic field, the radius of curvature of the proton's path while in the field. And the distance the proton traveled in the field. The distance the proton traveled in the field, that's gonna be hard, or. Okay, and the time interval during which the protons in the field, so, what do we know? It's going into positive I hat direction. So we have a, a proton. With a velocity this way of twenty mega meters per second. Then it enters this field, right, it enters this field with a magnitude of, uh, zero point three Tesla. And it leaves it with a velocity, so it loses all its X components, and it's just going in the negative J direction. Right, so it's just going down like this. So it's negative, well, yeah, I guess negative twenty, well, it's twenty, twenty. Mega meters per second, so. Pretty clearly, it made some sort of path like that inside, right, so it has some sort of radius of curvature. Um, so, and that velocity, yeah, makes sense that the velocity, the value stayed the same, cause it has to stay the same. Magnetic field can't change the velocity, it'll just change the direction of the velocity, right? So our first thing was the direction of the magnetic field, sorry, my nose is itchy for some reason, well, okay, so, our force. Our velocity, I almost used my left hand, our. Velocity is this way, the force is. Force, the force is this way, so it's out of the page, right?
I don't know if it matters for this question, the direction, we, as long as it's perpendicular, we just know that it has to make a semicircle.
Well, but if it was, if it was the other direction, the, it would make a cer- it would make a circle like this.
Wait, don't you mean a quarter of a circle?
We know it has to le- has to leave point, it has to leave moving in the opposite, well, not the opposite, it has, in a quarter of a semicircle, so. It has to leave like pointing upwards.
Pointing, what do you mean pointing upwards?
It's pointing in I hat direction and it leaves pointing, uh, like, in the J hat direct, like, it has to move in a quarter of a circle.
Yeah. So, but, but it could either move a quarter of a circle up like this or down like this. Right, so if you change the direction of the field.
Oh, yeah, cause it's positive, negative.
Big beeping, could they mute themselves? Big beeping, uh, Erwin, I think it's you, yeah, thank you, um, so. What were you saying? Can you say it again?
No, no, ne- never mind, I see it says negative twenty.
Negative twenty, yeah.
I thought it was just twenty I hat, twenty J hat, I was like, oh, okay.
No, 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 it just, it goes, uh.
It goes where? It goes down, it goes down from here, yeah, so since it's going down, our velocity and our force is in, so the magnetic field is coming out of the screen, so that's our magnetic field. Right? So now we know that, direction is out of the screen, let's just check the answer for this one, this was forty three. So forty three is positive Z direction, yep, positive Z direction, that's correct. So for B, the radius of the curvature, well, we can figure that out, R equals M magnitude V over Q magnitude B. So M is a, it's a proton. So it's the mass of a proton. So that's gonna be, um, yeah, M, so, uh, one point six seven two six. Times ten to the negative twenty seven, times V, which was twenty, times ten to the six.
He's gonna have one question, but.
Yeah.
It sticks out of the page, be. Like, how do you know how to point your, uh. The thumb, like, how do you know how to point that?
The thumb is the force, the thumb is the direction of the force, and the force is, is always to the center of the, so it's, it's doing centripetal motion, so the force is to the center of the radius.
So then it goes, uh, into the page.
For me, it's like, for me, it's like this, so maybe different, how you're looking at it, but imagine like your thumb is the direction of the force, fingers are the direction of the velocity, and your fingers are gonna curve in the direction of the magnetic field.
So it, it can go towards into the page?
Out of the page, out of the page.
Uh, uh. I, I don't see how the, so if I'm, cause if I'm putting my fingers down. And then, isn't my thumb supposed to go to the left?
Yeah. So, are you using your right, are you using your right hand or your left hand?
Okay, I got, I got, okay, I was using my left hand.
Are you using left hand?
Yeah, it doesn't, the left hand is like, it's like the nature just kinda points you towards your left.
Yes, I, I, I do that all the time, yeah. So there you go, that's, that's the problem.
I was thinking that, so I was thinking the right way is just that I had the wrong hand.
You had the wrong hand, yeah.
Chemistry has us, uh, chemistry branches us left, lefties, because it's like a left hand.
Yeah, I see, yeah, that's good, although we won't experience that, but that's okay. I got this as the radius, zero point six nine five nine, five nine seven meters, let's see if that's right, uh, zero point six nine six, yep, that's right, that's the radius. Then now, the distance the proton traveled in the field, okay, so it's not that bad, it's just gonna be a quarter turn, so when I said that was difficult to find before, I was like, oh, uh, well, how are we gonna do that, but. We can just see it's a quarter turn, so we know the radius of the circle, so the, the circumference of the circle would be two pi R. But we only want a quarter of that, so over four, so one half, two pi R, that's gonna be the distance traveled. I guess I'll say, you know what, I'll say, two pi R over four. Um, so that's just going to be, um, pi times the answer over four. No, pi times the answer over two. Which is one point oh nine. Which is right, meters, of course. So that's for part C, this is for part B, this was for part A. And then part D, the time interval during which the proton is in the field. Um. Uh, distance over time, just twenty times ten to the six equals one point oh nine over T. I think so, I think that's gonna be it, so, T equals one point oh nine over twenty times ten to the six. I get. Five point four seven times ten to the negative eight seconds. Have we said times ten to, yeah. One point, yeah, hold on, yeah, wait, nanosec, it's, it's fifty, I'm trying to say fifty four point seven nanoseconds.
Nano's ten to the negative nine.
Yeah, so I wanna move the decimal one place this way, so I multiply by ten.
Yeah.
And then this would be.
Why, why would you, no, you'd multiply by, you'd divide by ten, right?
Ten to the negative one?
No, you'd multiply, wait, what, I'm confused now.
Right, right, that's what I'm confused about too. I, if I have ten, I multiply the, by ten, the decimal place moves one to the right.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, you multiply by ten, you're right, okay, yeah, never mind, yeah.
So, but, so then this would be to the seven.
No, 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 cause you have to undo it, you have to undo what you, when you just multiplied, when you undo your. Like, the actual number is ten to the negative eight, but you wanna make it to, ten to the negative nine. So, if you multiply by ten, and then you have to, cause the actual number is five point four seven times ten to the negative eight.
Oh, okay, okay.
By ten, you have to undo that again.
Okay, okay. And then this would be nine there, yeah, okay, 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 I see, just, yeah. I understand. Just come, just the exponents. There you go, D is done for question forty three, so any questions about this one? Forty seven is next. Let's see how that goes. So forty seven is here, let's see, uh, is that what actually is next, forty seven, yeah, it's forty seven and then fifty one, and that's it for twenty eight, for chapter twenty eight. So, okay, heart surgeon monitors the flow rate of blood through an artery using an electromagnetic flow meter. Electrodes A and B make contact with the outer surface of the blood vessel, which has a diameter of that, for the, for a magnetic field. For the, for a magnetic field of that, an EMF, electrobi- electromotive force, yeah, no. Oh, someone's saying bye, okay, bye, uh, an EMF of hundred sixty microvolts. Uh, appears between the electrodes, calculate the speed of the blood. Um. Okay.
This is a hall voltage question.
Oh, it is, okay. Um. Why is it a whole, is it cause it's a, so I'm trying to think like.
So the, uh, there's ions in your blood.
Yeah.
Or I guess you could say there's electrons in your blood, uh, me, obviously, uh, and they think they're saying, um. The elec- they, they put place electrodes on either side. Uh, and then they put a magnetic field through it, and then that's how you create a hall voltage.
I see, okay, yeah, let's, let me, let me find the vol- the, the, the equations, I mean, for the hall voltage, so, um. What is the question, explain, uh, calculate the speed of the blood? So, yeah, okay, so E hall is equal to the speed of the things inside. These are magnitudes, times the magnitude of the magnetic field, right? And, so. Oh, and I see, okay, so then E is gonna be volts per meter, right, volts per meter. And I can figure what that is, right, so I have, so E equals volts per meter, which is gonna be. Um, one sixty times ten to the negative six, yeah.
I think that's the hall voltage, cause that's what the volt meter is reading, which would be the hall voltage.
Yeah, which is the, and so that would be the electric field that's induced between these two things. And that's what I'm looking for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To then solve for V, right? So one sixty times ten to the negative six over the distance, the distance is, has a diameter of three millimeters, so zero point zero. Three centimeters, zero three, zero zero three. Zero, three times ten to the negative three, um, and then. That's the electric field, right, that's gonna be our E, and then to solve for V, right, to get V. V D is gonna be E hall over the magnetic field. Magnitudes, magnitudes, all that, so it's just gonna be. Uh, well, one sixty times ten to the negative six over three times ten to the negative three over. Um, zero point zero four Tesla. So, one sixty, let me do better fractions here. One sixty times ten to the negative six over three times ten to the negative three over zero point zero four. Four thirds is what I get, so one point three three meters per second, is everything in the units I wanted to be in? Yeah, volts, Tesla. Millimeters, yeah, one point three three meters per second, let's see if that's right. Forty-seven, yep, that's good, that's correct. So explain why electrode A has to be positive as shown. So the reason, let's see why it has to be positive, well, so your blood is going like this, right? And so, the magnetic field is going, I forget. Forget if it goes from north to south.
I think we have to, oh, think, I think we're supposed to think about the current, if your blood, like, blood flow is the current, is.
Yeah.
Sorry, not, blood flow is the opposite direction of the current, because electrons.
Yeah, so the, so the, okay, so the current is going this way. But what would.
I think it's because of, so the hall effect, it creates like, uh, it works like an induced. Uh, dipole almost, so at the top of the, uh, the artery, there'll be negative. Uh, negatively charged ions and at the bottom, there'll be positively charged ones, so you have to put the opposite in order to actually read the voltage. So you have to put the positive on top because they're negative electrons at the top.
Okay, I guess, cause the electrons are gonna go to the top, so you wanna be able to read the voltage by putting the positive here and then. The negative there, so elec- electrons are gonna go up, so if this, if this was a negative charge up there, then.
I'm guessing the volt meter wouldn't read anything.
Yeah. Let's see what, uh.
You'd just read a negative voltage?
Yeah, uh, well, but maybe, maybe it wouldn't, because the electrons would still try to go up, right? The, the, the way the electrons try to move. So the way the electrons try to move is dependent on the magnetic field. Right, the force that they feel is depend on the magnetic field, I forget if the, the magnetic field goes from north to south, I'm pretty sure it goes. North to south.
Does, yeah.
Yeah, it does, it goes north to south, cause like, plus and like.
So, yeah, so it's good, so it goes like, it goes like that, so if the direction of the mag- magnetic field is that and the direction of the. The velocity of the thing is like that, oh yeah, the velocity of the. No, if blood flow is this way, then electrons are this way, yeah, so then, yeah, then the force is gonna go up from here. And you want that voltage, that top side to be the positive charge. Yeah, but wouldn't, then wouldn't.
No, 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 cause if the force is up, it's an electron, flip it, it, the electron would go to the bottom.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I, I got it for you, I love you so much.
Erwin, you got your, you got your mic on. Um, and then, so, yeah, you're right, go down, the force would be down and. But why wouldn't that, yeah, wouldn't switching the nodes just get a negative voltage, that would just give you a negative voltage, why would that, no, why would it not work?
I mean, maybe you're looking for a positive voltage and that's why.
That's why, yeah, I guess, so, let's see, let me read the answer, there's an answer here, so. B, it will not arrive at the center because the rate, oh, right, wrong question, um. Positive ions carried by the blood flow experience an upward force. Resulting in the upper wall of the blood vessel at electrode A becoming positively charged. And the lower wall of the blood vessel and electrode B becoming negatively charged, that's it.
Yeah, basically, they want positive volt.
You want a positive voltage, so you, you do it like this, cause the electrons have to go down and the protons have to go, well, electrons, electrons have to go down, so, yeah. And the positive charge goes to the top. Okay, so C, does the sign of the EMF depend on whether the mobile ions in the blood are predominantly positively or negatively charged, explain? Um. I don't think it would, does the sign depend on whether it's more one or the other, no, because it's. It, no matter what the effect happens, that however many negative ones go down and the positive ones go up. And that'll create the difference of charge, which will create the voltage. And yeah, that's the answer, no, negative, negative ions moving in the hi- in the direction of V would be deflected towards point B. Giving A a higher potential than B, positive ions moving in the direction of V would be deflected towards A, giving A a higher potential than B, oh, that's the. Oh, yeah, never mind, therefore, the sign of the potential difference does not depend on whether the ions in the blood are positively or negatively charged. The same effect would happen. So, yeah. Okay, any questions about this one? Okay, the last one, it's okay if we can't do it, it's in the challenge problem section again, so let's not spend a lot of time doing it, let's just spend. Maybe just read it and like.
It's interesting.
It's interesting what? I can't hear you, Erwin, cause you're cutting out.
The challenge ones, I usually the ones that are story.
The challenge ones are the ones that are, what?
They have a story to them.
That have a story to them, well, this time, looks like we don't have a story, we just have, this is the last one from the chapter. So, a wire having a linear mass density of one gram per centimeter. Is placed on a horizontal surface that has a coefficient of kinetic friction of that. The wire carries a current of that towards the east and slides horizontally to, at the, to the north at constant velocity. What are A, the magnitude and the direction of the smallest magnetic field that enables the wire to move in this fashion? Uh, not too bad as from first glance, let's see, a wire having linear mass density. Is M over L, right, of that, we know, we know this, that's good, is placed on a horizontal surface. So let's say this is our wire, it's on the horizontal surface, mu, ooh, I'll just say mu K, cause there's two mus now. Um, coefficient of kinetic friction of zero point two. The wire carries a current. Is one point five amps towards the east. Okay, the wire, so let's say this is east, carries a current to the east and it slides north, so if that's. So east is this way, sorry, north, north is this way, right, and that's the direction of motion as well. Uh, at constant velocity, so, uh, acceleration is zero, what are the magnitude and the direction of the smallest magnetic field? That enables this, so what are the two forces acting on this? Um. Magnetic field that, okay, so what are the two forces acting on it, okay, well, so, sorry, first of all, um, it's moving in that direction, so the force must be in that direction. Right, so if the velocity is this way and the force is this way, the magnetic field must be going, sorry, the, the current is this way. The, the force is into the screen, so my magnetic field must be going down. So my magnet- magnetic field must be going down, so fifty-one B better be down, let's see. Um. Uh, they don't, oh, yeah, fifty-one B is, oh no, it's an angle.
Oh, no. Oh, they mean like the absolute mid, like, so, so F B is equal to Q.
Yeah.
Times, or whatever it is, I guess it's for L, so I L B sine theta, oh no.
Okay, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was just. I was just, yeah, agreeing with.
Oh, agree, yeah, yeah, so we know that F, F E. Yeah.
Is it safe to say that the forces in the Y direction are only the normal force? The magnetic, uh, the magne- uh, the gravitational force, or will there be like a. Magnetic force in the Y direction as well?
No, no, that, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, so it would, yeah, so the sum of the forces, the sum of the forces in the Y direction is zero. Which tells us that, yeah, the force of gravity equals the normal force, right?
Yeah.
And the sum of the, uh, forces in the X direction is also zero, cause the acceleration is zero. So that just tells us that the electric force is equal to the force of friction.
Magnetic force, I think.
Magnetic force, you're right, is equal to the force of friction, right?
Yeah.
And I can tell you that the magnetic force is equal to the, uh, mu times the normal force. And I can tell you that the normal force is MG. Right?
And M is, and M is length over mu. Like, not the.
Yeah, I should, so I should be clear here, this is M, mu K, mu K, yeah, so F B is mu K. Mu, um, L.
No, L over mu.
No, no, it just, it would just be mu L, cause mu is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mass per length, yeah, so it'd be just L G, two mus in one question, okay. Um, so we have one expression for the force, the magnitude of the force. Another expression for the magnitude of the force is gonna be F, the magnitude. Of the force is equal to I magnitude L magnitude B. Sin of the angle between those two things. So this is the same force, so I can. What's my, what do I not know, okay, well, I don't know, I know, do I know anything, what do I know?
I know the linear. Gonna cancel out, so we don't have to worry about L. Actually, will mu cancel out as well? For the same, no, it won't, cause that's not involved.
Yeah, just one thing, if there's a theta between them, wouldn't that mean there is? Like, if there's there in the, in this expression, wouldn't that mean there is like a. A force in the Y direction, like magnetic force in the Y direction?
Um, yeah.
No, not necessarily.
Is it gonna be on the plane, like, it won't be like, I don't know how to say it. You know how the X Y plane, would it be in the X Y plane, so it will be horizontal, but in an angle.
I don't know if that means that there's no magnetic force in the Y direction, though, there would be a magnetic force in the Y direction.
Um, I don't know, let's see.
No, no, the force, magnetic, yeah, magnetic force, yeah, 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 magnetic force is, is only in the. Away from us, north direction, the field has an angle, the field has an angle to the plane, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's, I said it wrongly.
No, no, it, but, now I'm thinking, does that mean that, okay.
We're going in the right direction, we have everything, like, we have mu K and then we have, um, I and do we have B though?
We don't have B, we're looking for B. So what we're trying to solve for is B and sine theta.
Alright, then, we already have everything, right?
I cheated, I opened.
Yeah.
I cheated, I opened a splitter and I have like a, a free body diagram, do you want me to send that or you guys wanna like just?
I guess you can send, you can send it, you can send it, and then I'll look at it, I'll look at it after, but.
Yeah, I cheated, I gave, gave up too easy.
So. We don't, like, this I could figure out, I'm pretty. Uh, I don't have a mu, do I, I don't have a. I mean, I have a mu, but I don't have a length, yeah.
I think that the reason that the, there's a theta to it and it's not just like north. It's because it's gonna lift a little bit of the normal force off to reduce the friction.
Um, okay.
Then if, it's gonna make it like a little bit lighter, so then that'll be like the absolute minimum, I'm not sure how you get there at all.
I don't know how you get there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how you get there, but it would make it a bit lighter, so it'd be a bit easier to push, cause I think if we just calculated it the way it is right now. Then it would be like a slightly bigger magnetic field, I don't know how much bigger, it's probably very tiny, but, so.
Yeah, you can see the body, the free body diagram that they have over there. We'll send it to the discussion.
Okay, this is, this is what they, they're giving, so force of gravity down, force of friction that way, normal force up. Now, the force, oh, yeah, okay, so, the. They're saying some angle theta here.
Oh, we're looking for that theta, damn.
So, okay, so then let's, 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 using this free body diagram, let's do again, some of the forces. Some of the forces in the X direction, so X direction is, well, let's call this the X direction, I guess, or. Yeah, what did I call the X direction over here? X direction was. Up and down, no, Y direction's up and down, X direction was in and out, okay, so, let's do Y first, I guess, up and down. So we have the normal, well, equals zero, so the normal force. Minus. The gravitational force. Okay, then we have. Plus the F B. Sin, no, cosine theta. Because. And that's the same theta is right there, because this angle is theta, so if I want the Y component, I do cosine theta of that thing right there, right? And that equals zero, then I also have the X direction, which is gonna be, so I'll define that as positive and that as positive. So. Uh, negative force of friction. Yeah, negative force of friction, and then positive, uh, just F B. Sin theta. Equals zero. And what are we trying to solve for, um, FG, we know FN.
And, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, oh, yeah, you say that, they call the, the angle between the, the velocity and the. Better theta as well, I was just confused for a second.
But, yeah, that's, that's that, so, that's, and so we're looking for theta. And we're looking for the magnetic field, which we can get in here, so let me quickly say. F B equals, um, I L B. I'll call it L like that, uh, times sine of, oops, is this the same theta though? Between the force and, no, this is not the same angle between. Yeah, this is not the same.
You can call it sigma if you want to, just to remove confus- confusion. Because you called both of them sing- uh, theta now, and I'm getting kind of confused, to be honest.
Well, which, these are, these are both theta, these are both theta here, these two. Right, but this right here is where I'm gonna get, I have to put something different.
On the, on the diagram, you call the angle between the.
This is also theta, this is also theta.
Oh, they're the same?
They're the same angle, yeah, think about it for a second, right, the, the, these are perpendicular. So if, if this increases, then, yeah, they're the same angle. There's, they're the same angle right there, that one there, right, so.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
I would, yeah, yeah.
And I guess B dot I would be ninety, yeah, B dot nine would be always be ninety, so it's sine of ninety. Cause look, this, we're comparing this vector to this vector, that's always gonna be ninety degrees there. Right, so, okay, sine of ninety, that's one, so there we go, I L B. Do we know I, yes, do we know L, hopefully it cancels, and B, we're looking for that, that's our goal. So if I sub that into these equations, F N equal, oh sorry, F N minus F G. I plus I L B cosine theta. Equals zero. Negative F F plus, well, you know, I'll write, I'll write, I'll write that as mu F N. Um plus F, well, F B I can change to I L B. Oh, I missed the cosine theta, so it's cosine, oh no, I didn't miss it, sorry, I L B sine theta. Equals zero. I can, what do I know here? I know pretty much everything. Because.
Say again why the thetas are the same, cause they don't look the same.
The, this one here, this, this, this theta here, and this theta here is what you said.
Yeah.
Right, this one here, well, if I have, like, if I have this, right, the angle between these are ninety degrees. This is ninety degrees here, right, then if I have a new perpendicular set of vectors. Their angle is also ninety degrees, right, ninety degrees, and this, the amount that this vector traveled. Theta is the same amount that this vector traveled. Right, does that make sense? So I'm ju- just picture like you're putting your hand down and turning it, both those vectors turned by the same uh angle.
But is F B on the Z X plane or the?
Z Y plane.
Is F B on the?
F F B is on the Z Y plane.
And B is also?
Z Y plane, yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm just blind, sorry.
Right, it's, it's, it's a weird drawing, it's a weird drawing, dude, don't worry, but yeah, that's, that's the idea, is I, I'm just picking those, the two. Act, those are perpendicular, F B and B are uh perpendicular, so I'm just, if I'm rotating them, the angle that one rotates is the same as the angle that the other one rotates. They're both theta. So, yeah, that's both theta. So then plugging everything in here, I think, I, yeah, I essentially know everything. I don't know the normal force. Yeah, I don't know the normal force.
Isn't the normal force um the same as gravity anyway, same as the force of gravity?
But that's only if, that's only if there's no other forces in the Y direction. There is another force.
Ah, oh, that's right.
So the normal force will be. Will be equal to M G, uh like to the, yeah, to the uh. Gravitational force subtract the Y component of the magnetic force, right?
Uh, yes, but I would be, I can't use that, because I'd be subbing an equation into itself, right, I'd be subbing. Like, if I, if I use that here, what would happen if I say the normal force is F G um minus F B. F B cos theta. Right, if I, if I, if I sub that in here to the second equation, I would get, think about it, I'd get F G minus F G. F B cos theta minus F B cos theta, zero equals zero, is what I'd get. So I, I can't use that, I can't use that here, I already use these equations, so I can't sub.
No, but, but it will be, it will be cos theta squared, if you think about it, it will be I, uh current length cos, cos theta. All of them times cos theta.
Why all of them times cos theta?
Because it's only the Y component of those. The equation is uh current times length times cos theta, this is the, this is the definition. And to fi- to have the Y component, you have to multiply it by cos theta, just to have the Y component.
Yeah, thi- this is the, this is F F B Y, right there, that's F B Y.
But you're missing a cos theta.
Why?
Are you, isn't it? Yeah.
Why, why I'm missing a cos, uh F B is I L B, no, 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 sine theta there, well, it'd be sin theta. Right, because it's sine of ninety. I think you're, may- maybe you're thinking of a sine theta? Sine theta here, and that'd be sine of ninety, we know it's ninety because the, the angle between B and this vector is ninety, so that's just one. I'll leave sine of ninety there, though, so you can see sine of ninety degrees, right? So, yeah, so this wouldn't quite work, well, we have, what, what do we know here? I know this mu, right, that's the coefficient of kin- of kinetic friction, yeah, I know that mu, okay. I don't know F N, I know I, I know, I don't know L, I know I. I know I, I know mu, and I know the other mu.
Oh, Slater says you're right, I think you're on the right track.
Yeah, I have a question, couldn't, uh, you know the above equation that F N is equal to F G plus the. You could basically put everything else and isolate for F N and then put that in the second equation, and then wouldn't that like?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sub, sub this into here?
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't that?
Oh, yeah, I guess you're, I guess you're right, how many unknowns do I have? The thing is, I have three unknowns, that's my problem, I have three unknowns. One unknown, one unknown, one unknown. And L.
No, but then, no, we know L.
Solve for F N from the first equation and sub it into the second equation, like sub in F N?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know that's what you're saying, but it's just, that won't get us too far.
Anyway, yeah, that, I was thinking that, and then I was like, oh, but then how, that doesn't help us with B.
Yeah, right, so I'd get this, I'd get negative mu F G minus, uh plus. Mu I L B cos theta. Plus I L B sine, L B sine theta. Equals zero, and now I have one equation, and how many unknowns?
One, two, three, three.
Well, actually, yeah, if, if I move this into. Hold on, we know, we know the linear mass density, so mass per length, so then this tells us that, yeah, this tells us that this is the kinetic. Mass equals mu times length. So I could turn this into negative uh mu K, mu times length, plus mu K. I L is, yeah, L is just, L. B cos theta plus I L B. Sin theta equals zero, so what's my un?
You forgot G in uh the F G, cause it's M and M G, you forgot the G there, yeah.
Uh, so what do I not know? I know these two, I don't know this. I don't know this, I know this, I don't know this, I don't know this.
L cancels out, it's in every term.
Oh, L cancels out, so, okay, that's a good point, yeah, L cancels out, good to know. Okay, thank you, that's right, then, so now we have two unknowns, just B and cos theta. Or B and theta, whatever, um. I need another equation, I just have to get another equation.
I mean, before, before we like get really stressed out about this, we apparently don't need to use both of them, they only used like one equation. The F B equals um F F, like the force friction equals force uh magnetic field. That one.
Uh, force of friction equals F F, oh, okay.
This is like a, this is like one of the challenge problems, so.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, yeah, we don't have to, okay, let's see Slater, I guess, let's see what, what's the next, cause. I don't have.
I can post a solution.
Or I think I, I think I can find it in just one second, I think it's almost, I have it here in like one second. What's the number? Fifty one.
It's in the chat if anyone.
Oh, yeah, okay, then I'll just get it from the chat, cause otherwise I have to. Thank you. So. Okay, that's fine. Calculate the magnitude of the mag- magnetic field, since the wire is moving on a surface, the friction coefficient. Mu and the force that is moving the wire is the magnetic force, then we can write down the following equation, F M equals mu F N. F M equals mu F N, yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's fine. Where F M is the magnetic force and F N is the normal component of the wire, the equation is then, so they say F N equals M G. There's the difference, they say F N equals M G. Or F N equals F G, but that's not. Necessarily true, I mean. How is that true, is, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask, how is that true, because if you look at the picture. F N, F N, I mean up, is M G, but there's also this Y component of this force. So, but by, by in this green section, they're saying that. F N equals F G equals M G, right, which is strange, but okay, let's just keep reading and let's see what it says. The left side of the equation is like magnetic force, the right side is M G is the equation for the normal component. B is the magnetic field, I is the current, L is length, where and A is the angle between the magnetic field, since they are perpendicular. Yeah, like I said, that's one. So, um. Geez, I scripted, we're looking for the magnitude, so they just rearrange. Um, this for B, so it's just U M G I L sign, yeah. M over L is zero point one, I guess we know that, mass per length, yeah, U G. Okay, but, so, so there's, the, the confusing part is that they're saying this, they're saying, so everything else makes sense after that. So technically, they are using another, they're using two equations, they're using the sum of, this is, this is the sum of the forces in the X direction. Gives us this equation, and they're using some of the forces in the Y direction uh equals zero, which gives us that F G equals F N. And our difference is that we're not saying this, we're saying that there's also a Y component of the force. Um, so why would there not be, let's see, let's read this first bit maybe. Your index finger shows the direction of the current, the middle fingers point in the direction of the magnetic field, that, well, whatever, it's a, the different one. Uh, consider that the current is moving eastwards, the force is applying the right hand rule, we get the direction of the magnetic field, yeah, no different there. Down towards the page. Down towards the page, yeah, is that what we said? Down. Down towards the page, yeah, that makes sense. So, yeah, that, that would be, that would be right, although actually they don't get an angle. Yeah, they don't get an, they don't get an angle, let's see if they get, if that's the same answer as what's in the textbook here.
No, that's, I think that's supposed to be the angle between B and uh uh I, or B and L, right?
Uh, B and L is ninety, that's ninety, A, alpha here is ninety, yeah, but the angle, so that's not actually the answer in the textbook either. This answer right here, zero point one three oh eight, the answer, this is right, if you're just assuming that the force goes. Yeah, that the, i- this is correct if you assume this, that the force goes straight this way. Goes straight this way, and the magnetic field goes straight down. Or down, sorry, straight down. But they really mean, I guess, you want, they wanna minimize. Or like find the minimum value of the magnetic field, and at what angle that lets this happen, and they even mean the angle here. So there's the difference between the questions, it's not exactly the same question. Or like the Slater solution is a little bit. Simplifying it, not to the extent that the question's asking for. So, yeah, the I, I don't really know, I don't really, we don't, I think that's, that's all we can do for this question. If you simplify it to this, to this situation where you say, you know, field is straight down, that means force is straight in the Z axis. Then, yeah, we can find it, we can find it pretty easily, cause F G equals F N, you just do one, one substitution, you just solve and there you go. But otherwise, I'm not really sure what to do, yeah. Okay, well, that's all of chapter twenty eight. Let's see where we are here, I'll just scratch some things off, so we did all of these, and we did all of these, that's fifty one. So chapter twenty nine is next, so is everybody good if we move on to chapter twenty nine and try some questions there?
We have four minutes till eight o'clock, but.
Yeah, probably can try one or two or some, I don't know, we'll see how much we can try. See how much we can do, um, so let's start question one. Two as well, no, thank, thankfully we don't have to do two, cause two is a huge question, so. And we probably don't actually have to do all of these, cause we only did ten point one, and I can't imagine we're gonna do all these questions from chapter ten, so I, I don't think we need. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we don't do the last stuff here, thirty nine is definitely. No, maybe we do, I don't know, we'll see, let's, let's just take a look here, so calculate the magnitude of the magnetic field at a point that many. Centimeters from a long thin conductor carrying a current of that, well, we just have a formula for this, so uh if I just find the formula. So the magnitude of the magnetic field at a point. Long thin conductor, I guess they mean a wire is what they're saying, carrying a current, so the magnetic field. And so we say, it's, since it's a long thin conductor, we don't know the length of it, uh so we can just assume that it's the distance that we are from the top, from it. Is much shorter than the length of the wire, so we can use this formula, so magnitude of the magnetic force is mu naught. Um, I don't know what mu naught is, I think that's a constant, is that a constant? Yeah, that is a constant. Mu naught I over two pi A, where A is the distance from the wire. And there, mu naught, if I remember correctly, is four pi times ten to the seven.
Isn't it?
Negative, negative.
Negative seven, negative seven, yeah. I was almost there. So now I can just punch all this in, so. Four pi times ten to the negative seven times two over two pi times zero point twenty five. Math error, because it doesn't like you wanna do four pi times ten to the something, so I gotta do four times three point one four one five nine. So I get one point five six, five, well, one, one point six, times ten to the negative six Tesla. One point six times ten to the negative six, that's, that's correct. And we're pretty much at eight o'clock, so I'll just put the next question on the board, on the board, on the screen, and I'll, uh, that'll be it for before our break, so. Question five is next. And along, well, let's read it, a long straight wire carries a current I at a right angle bend made in the middle of the wire, the bend forms an arc of circle radius R. Determine the magni- magnetic field of point P, well, okay, I can just, oh no, I think we have to do more to this, actually, no, it's not that simple, I thought it was gonna be one formula. So it's a couple more steps, but yeah, it's eight o'clock, so let's take our, I will take a twenty minute break, and then we'll see how long, cause I also didn't take a break. Six thirty, so, yeah, let's take a twenty minute break, and then we will be back and we'll at least finish chapter twenty nine. So that's gonna be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more questions, and we gotta finish those, and then after that, we'll see. Probably will be over nine o'clock, but we'll see. Okay, so, yes, let's take our twenty minute break, we'll be back at. What is it, eight, well, there you go, eight twenty one, I'll leave it at eight twenty one.
Would I have a quick question?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Are we gonna do a session tomorrow morning?
Um, I guess I'll decide at the end of this session if we, how much we've done, we'll see there.
Right.
And we'll figure it out.
Okay guys, I am back. Let's get back into it. Um hopefully everybody had a good break. Okay we're here. Is everybody here? Can everybody hear me? Some people are deaf and still but maybe they'll undiff. Um yeah okay well I'll just I'll just get into it so. Let's start here so question five was a long straight wire carries current I. A right angle bend is made in the middle of the wire the bend forms an arc of circle radius R as shown in this figure determine the magnetic field at point P. The center of the arc. Okay. So. What I'm thinking is that we have to yeah.
Sorry, aren't they just asking for the equation that we have in the equation sheet?
Uh that's what I was thinking at first too. But just but I think what this is is that we have to separate into three parts we have to separate into the magnetic field caused by this wire. The magnetic field caused by this curve and the mag magnetic field caused by this one. Right so I what I'm I'm pretty yeah.
Don't we usually ignore this part like in examples we did in the. Class we ignored the straight parts we only calculated the arc.
I don't know if that's I I think we did account we did include these ones these wires.
The separation is correct for this question.
The set like using three parts yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah on the web assign there was also one question where you had to separate the loop and the wire that was creating the loop. So yeah you do have to separate the there's there's three parts here. But uh uh one thing to notice is that these and this and this together effectively makes um a straight wire. So I'm pretty sure. We can use just the straight while straight wire formula for these two combined. And then the curved wire for this one and then just add them together. So the straight wire formula would be uh mu not for for an infinite wire. Mu not I over two pi A and A is R. Plus for the curve section which is um. Mu not I over four pi. R. Theta. So two over four so I get two mu not I plus mu not oh three mu not I. Three over four. Mu not I over pi R is my answer for this. Let's see if that's right for five.
Uh you forgot that theta right?
Oh I forgot the theta yes I did.
Well we know theta though correct it's ninety degrees.
Oh yeah theta is ninety exactly or or pi over two. So this is just times yeah okay forgot pi over two. Pi over two that'll cancel with this pi. And this will be eight. Eight R. So then still to combine these I need to do. Well I I I think what they do is they just factor out what do they factor out they factor out the two and the four here cancels is the two on the bottom. And then the yeah this is just gonna be they factor out a mu not I over two R. And all that's left is one over pi plus one over four yeah. That's our answer. So what I did just to recap a little bit is. There's three things contributing to the magnetic field at this point right here sorry mine does itchy again okay cat hair something um. This segment of wire this segment of wire and this curve second segment of wire. These two yellow segments of wire individually they they well. In combination they combine into being just the same thing as if having one infinite wire in both directions. Right? Otherwise it'd be half. And then here this curve segment is just uh this thing right here. Right this thing right here with a theta being ninety degrees pi over two yeah. Okay. That's five. Now let's move on to seven. Seven. Is here. So three long parallel conductors each carry a current of I. Uh this figure is an end view of the conductors which each with each current coming out of the page taking A equals one centimeter determine the magnitude and direction of the magnetic field at point. A B and C. Start with A. Okay let's start with A so in all of these the current is going up so the magnetic field is going like this in all of these. Right the magnetic field is going like this so the net magnetic field will be in this direction. Right I at point A at point A. And so we just gotta add all those magnetic fields together that was caused by all these things. Right so if I go to my notes and I wanna see the magnetic field. Some distance from a wire. It's the same formula we've been using before I'm pretty sure. Yeah I'm pretty sure it's just the same formula nothing different why would there be anything different I don't know. Direction yeah I think it's I don't think there's anything different so. Just uh what I said before which was that the magnitude of the field are they long there's a long wire. Three long parallel so it says long that means you can assume they're infinite. Um so magnitude of the magnetic field is mu not I over two pi A. So we know I and we know A. Uh well we almost know this this radius so this radius here it's a right angle triangle so it's gonna be the square root of A squared plus A squared which is just. Root two A. It's gonna be root two A there. Um. And yeah that's fine. So now the mag and this is also gonna be root two A. And of course that's also it's all gonna be root two A and this is gonna be three A I guess. Three A yeah so the magnitude of the magnetic field right there is gonna be. The sum of all these things. Mu not I over two pi root two A. That's for this first one next one's gonna be the same. So two of them. Right? Times two. Plus. Mu not I over two pi three A. It's gonna be A A.
Wait weren't you up to like separate them into like components X and Y components?
It just has magnitude and direction. So that's all.
I think you have to separate them yeah.
Oh yeah cuz. The X's will cancel out right? If you were to separate into X uh X and Y components then the X's will cancel out. That's why it's going down.
The X but there's only there's only if this is the Y direction there's only Y components.
No but like. Yeah for the top one uh the magnetic field would go down and to the bit up to the right and then for the uh bottom one it would go down into the left.
No I think it just goes straight down for all of them I think it's just straight down.
Oh no I think.
No no they're out of the page they're not done.
Tangent it has to be tangent to the uh magnetic field that's the um that the current is creating.
Yeah so then this the this this is creating a a curve like that.
No no but like.
Bad picture but. Wouldn't it be maybe I'm wrong I don't know but but my understanding.
I and A.
I and A.
Like there's there's like any of the I's in it it would typically the ones at the top and the bottom. Uh the magnetic field would have to be tangent to that line connecting them together right.
Yeah if we're making it would go past that.
Tangent to R which is the the dotted the dashed line. And I which is going into the. Or coming out of the page.
Yeah.
So it points down and away to the left.
Oh you're saying okay okay cuz the current is going like this. But.
They end up cancelling out. Uh I don't know if there's an angle angle calculation involved they they would end up cancelling it.
There is I think the angle is forty five because it's a special triangle right?
But but are you s- are you saying like the magnetic field is like is like this at this point from here?
Yeah for the bottom one yeah and then for the top one it would go down into the right. And then for the right.
Will go to the yeah. It will be just.
Yeah.
Wait so you're saying it's supposed to look like like this?
Yeah.
Uh no no no. No no uh for the top one it would go down into the right like towards the bottom I.
Towards the bottom I like like it should go like this?
That would be for the uh that would be the magnetic field for the top I and then for the bottom I it would go to the one that you would you were gonna do earlier. So go to the left and yeah. And then for the right I would go straight down.
Oh. Oh yeah okay I do see what you mean yeah I do see what you mean.
Well I also sent a picture to the discussions. It's kinda little you know but it's the same thing as they said.
Yeah. Thank you for that I do I do see what you mean now why that would have to work like that yeah. Yeah because this. This wire is is producing a magnetic field like this. Right but yeah you're right this it would it would have to be like like that. Because this this vector and this have to be perpendicular. Right and the the vector coming out like this has to be perpendicular so yeah I see okay that makes sense. So then this would be that and then we just separate this like you said into um well the X and Y components cancel out so we just need the. We just need the Y components for both of these. And so I'm just gonna do I guess it's forty five. So this angle is forty. So that angle is forty five?
Yes. It's a special triangle so yes it's forty yeah forty five forty five and ninety.
Yeah so then it would be uh I would just need the Y component do we say so it'd be just cosine of forty five. So multiply here by cosine forty five. And then that's everything everything's okay otherwise so is that does that seem like a good fix?
Why can't you just use A?
Why can't I use A would say there?
Yeah since you're only using the Y component.
But which one's A what what do you mean use A?
Like the length A. The radius is that you want the like Y components of the uh.
Yeah the this is. We we want just the well not the Y component of the distance we want the Y component of the resulting magnitude.
I think I think he's asking why you're not using just two A because it's only if it's only the Y component their Y component.
Yeah why not like from the beginning without cap cuz right now you're calculating like the magnitude with this and then. Turn it in into a while I'm asking if it like give the same thing or is it would it give something else if you use A.
I just I just don't know what you mean by use A well how would I use A?
Like when you write mu not I uh over two pi like A since A is the dist is the Y distance between.
Here.
The top wire and the point A.
Yeah between like this point right here this point right here.
Yes.
Right and you're just taking the Y component it's just that this distance this distance is not the same as this distance. Right so I think that would not give you the same answer.
Okay.
I think does anybody else have any idea about that I think that would not give you the same answer that distance is not the same as this distance. So you have to do it like.
I think you regarding that if he use that he will have to do to do like the square root of. Like he will have to use the Pythagorean theorem to add them together.
And so then you just.
Just add them together at the same time.
Yeah.
The this way they keep and just add them together at the same time. He used the way he was mentioning.
By you by doing this by doing this vector here the Y component and then you'd also have to get the X component. So you'd have to get.
Yeah he's saying just do that twice so he 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 said do it again once more for the other direction that's what he's saying.
This one?
Yeah.
But either way that's not the the magnetic field here is not what we're looking for in this in this part of the question though. Right we'd still have to find. Like we still have more stuff to find that I think this is just how you have to do it. Cuz again this this distance is not the same and you find the X component of the. Thing. But I don't know if it works like that I don't know if it works like that.
I'm more confused I think this one is the correct way I think what you have on this.
This is this is the correct way yeah. Um so cosine forty let me just make sure cosine forty five is gonna give me this Y component. Yeah and then that's what I want okay good so it's gonna be mu not I over. Uh well it's gonna be two pi A. Cuz cosine forty five is root root two over two I'm pretty sure. Yeah root two over two so that'll turn into that plus. Mu not I over two pi well six six pi A. Okay and now just factor some stuff out mu not I over two pi A. Which is gonna be one plus. Uh two pi A I just have a three there so one over three. So there we go uh so.
Wait wait isn't cosine forty five for the Y axis?
Yeah and we want the Y axis.
Then why is the three A one there is it three A doesn't have any Y component right?
Yeah so I'm not taking the Y component of I don't I'm I'm just taking the magnitude of it.
But it is in the Y direction you see how it is.
Already in the Y direction.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh I see oh yeah okay.
See yeah okay so four times three point one four one five nine times ten to the negative seven. Times I which is two. Over two pi. Times A A is one centimeter zero point zero one meters. Uh multiply that by one plus. Uh multiply that by one plus a third. So I get five point three three, five point three three times ten to the negative five Tesla, see if that's right. Five point three three, yeah, that's right. So then, that's for part A, for part B, it's gonna be, oh, they don't do C, oh, no, they do do C, okay, nevermind. So for part C, it's gonna be here. This is gonna be in that direction, this is gonna be in that direction, and this is gonna be in that direction. So these two are gonna cancel out, so I mean, let me erase a couple, you know what, I'll just put the drawing again. So for part B here, at this point, we have uh one of them like that, one of them like that, and one of them like that. Right? Because this is producing a thing, this is producing a field, this is producing a field. So these two are gonna cancel, and all we're gonna have is this downward one. And that's just gonna be mu not what was it again, mu not I over two pi two A, distance is two A there, so four pi A. Right, so this is just gonna be, well, it's actually just gonna be ten to the negative seven uh times two over zero point zero one. So I get two times ten to the negative five Tesla. And let's see if that's right. Two times ten to the negative five, yeah, that's right. Okay, so that's for part B, and now for part C. Let's see what's here, so for part C, we have this right here, we have one that goes down, this one goes like that. This one goes like that, so this one is producing a field that goes up. This one, oh no, sorry, not up, producing a field that goes like that. This was producing a field that goes like that, and this one's producing a field that goes like that. Okay, so what we need to show, okay, so we gotta figure out the, the the X components are gonna cancel here, right? The X components are definitely gonna cancel, so we just need the Y components. We're gonna define this as positive, so what do we have in the positive direction? Well, I have this magnetic field, uh cosine forty five. This magnetic field cosine forty five, so two times that magnetic field cosine forty five. Um plus the magnetic field going down from this one, so let's just do one at a time here, so this is um mu not I over two pi, and then what's the distance here? Well, it's root two A, root two A. This is root two A as well, so two of them. And then I'm gonna add mu not, sorry, subtract mu not I over two pi A, and this is actually, actually just A. So I should get mu not I over two pi A. Right, because cosine forty five is root two over two, minus mu not I over two pi A equals zero. So the magnet- magnetic field there is zero. And that's seven. So any questions? Determine the magnetic field in terms of I, A, and D at the origin due to the current loop in this figure, the loop extends to infinity above the fig- figure. Okay, um so I remember someone talking about this question, and I can't remember what they said. So we need to find the magnetic field here at the origin. Well, we can find it pretty easily from this segment of wire, what the magnetic field there is. Then from these segments of wire that's gonna be three other, well, three total parts, two extra bits here, so start with that one, this will say number one. I guess I'll call this number one, number two, number three, number three. So from number one, we have, well, actually, from number two, we have the simple the magnetic field from that is just gonna be, oh, it's not an infinite wire, just realized. Oh, and so we have to use the full formula, yeah, that makes sense. So the full formula is not as simple as we were saying, it's mu not IL, so L is two A. L equals two A, so I'm just gonna write that here right away. Two A over two pi A is the distance from the thing, so that's D. Over square root L squared, which is two squared A squared, plus four D squared. And this is also two squared, so I can factor out a two squared, so it's just two. So this will become well, I can write it as before, so it would just be mu not I A over two pi D square root A squared plus D squared. So that's from this wire, but then from the other wire. Will they just cancel? Because the magnetic field is like this, and then the magnet, maybe feels like this, I think they'll just cancel. That would be nice.
Probably correcting that.
So I hope so, let's see. I'll have to figure out how they factor this out. No, they don't have the same thing as this. Into the page. Oh, wrong hand, into the page. How? Yeah, into the page, that makes sense. And then this. Okay, maybe I made a mistake with the formula, or they're just rearranging it differently? No, somehow the root, the square roots on the numerator, I don't know how that happened. No idea, the square roots on the numerator. Mu not I, two pi A D minus D, what's that? No, the the answer's weird, um. Loop extends to infinity above. This is zero.
What's the answer from the textbook?
Let's see, it's um the answer, do it in green, is mu not I over two pi A D square root D squared plus A squared minus D. So somehow we're supposed to get that. Well, from we say this, they're in opposite directions, I mean, this one's going like that. Oh, no, never mind, sorry, they're in opposite directions. Wait, that's going like that, and that's going like that. Oh, they don't cancel, no, because this current is going, this magnetic field is going like this. And this magnetic field is going like this. So they just add, so it's just twice as much. And so do I consider it another infinite wire, and do I just take this? So do I take this amount from that wire? The total magnetic field from from one and two is just going to be from an in, the the same equation, but just from an infinite wire, and the infinite wire equation is mu not I over two times the distance from it, which is A. Oh, no, but we're off the wire, we're off the wire. That might be true if the wire was here. But that's not, that's not the case. That's not the case, we're off the wire here. Okay, I'm not sure, let's look at Slater. Let's see what Slater says. Oh, wait, I'm in the wrong section, twenty nine, I need to be. Oh, their answer is more complicated? Than the textbook answer, let me see what the, how it compares to the textbook answer. Yeah, their answer is even different than the textbook answer.
Were the answers different for the infant wires?
What just, what was it?
What was the answer different for the infinite wires or the non-infinite one?
Let's see here, I'm looking here, so for the, yeah, for the bottom one. Divide it into three, segment one, yeah, segment one is no, that's fine, mu not I A over two pi D A squared plus D squared, that's fine. This is correct. This is just, this was just one, that was the simple part. But then now for the other ones, for segment two. For segment two, they use, yeah?
Yeah, I think it might be different because the A, you know, in the the distance from, it's supposed to be the distance from the midpoint of the wire to the point that we want. So like, I think that might be, yeah, okay.
So this is what they do, this is the diagram they draw, and they say, because left wire is infinitely long, theta one equals oh, the, theta one goes to zero, cuz it's infinitely long. Yeah, theta one goes to zero. Cosine one equals cosine zero. So but what does this help us? The magnitude? So the magnitude of the magnetic field produced by this segment at the origin is found by why is it found by this? The magnetic field caused by segment two is mu not I over four pi D times cosine theta one minus cosine theta two. I don't know why it's that, though, why is it cosine theta one minus cosine theta?
Is this just something we forgot to cover in class or?
Man, I don't know, in this homework section, I was so lost, no other questions. Like they did not cover that that well, they just went over really fast.
I got a really random idea. That wouldn't really include those close tadas and stuff. But he, uh Springer did do a question kind of similar to this, if we were on the wire, it was like half an infinite wire. You do have to divide the formula by two. Um and because we have two of them, then we can basically treat them as one, because you're gonna add two halves, and then you're gonna have a gap in the middle. So can we subtract the gap in the middle from a fully infinite wire and then get something similar? But I don't know if it works like that, if you could just.
Where did the gap come from?
Because we're not on the wire, we're like a bit below, can you scroll back up to the, um, yeah, yeah, that, like, we're on the, we're at the origin. Sorry, if you imagine, if you take like both of those half infinite wires and line them up next to each other, they're not gonna be touch, you know, like, there's that gap. Subtract, uh my my idea is you treat it as one infinite wire, subtract the gap, and then maybe come to the right answer.
But how do you subtract the gap? Like, what does I?
You do, you find, you find a finite wire of that length and subtract that. There'd be, it'd be like two D.
Length two D?
Yeah, because it's D up to the wire, right, so it'd be T, D up to the wire, on one side, D up to the wire on the other side.
That amount, like from.
I'm combining it right off the bat, we could treat them two separately, it'd be an infinite wire on the left, which is half, or I mean, half an infinite wire on the left. Half an infinite wire on the right. Um but you're not ex- it's not exactly half, cuz you're not right on the same level as it, so if we pretend that it is for the time being. And then subtract the part that we like.
Let's try that, yeah, here.
But I just don't know if you can just pretend and subtract. That's my, that's my own issue.
Let's see, let's see, so the 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 segment, this is one, this is two, this is three. From segment one, we know this, the magnetic field is what I said before, which I'll just read off of here. Uh which was here, mu not I A over two pi D square root of A squared plus D squared. Okay, so um we're gonna figure out the we're gonna figure out the magnitude, cuz the, uh this is what I understood, figure out the magnetic field caused by this, these wires. Figure out the magnitude caused by these wires and subtract the two, this green one goes infinitely, infinitely. Is that the idea?
Yeah, 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 if it's possible, yeah.
Let's try, let's see if that gives us an answer. Well, so the the green ones, the like green ones that go infinitely that would just be two times half infinity, so that would just be infinity, whatever. Um and so we would just do, it would be the same formula, infinite wires, so that's just mu not I over mu not I over uh two, no, mu not I over two pi A. Yeah, two pi A. And A is, yeah, A is the actual distance here, so two pi A. And then we wanna subtract from that, the magnetic field caused by these wires, which is two times, cuz there's two of them. Oh, no, we're not in the center, hold on, yeah, we're not in the center, so these these yellow, these pink ones have to go like that. Oh, no, we're gonna have trouble now, though, because because I have to s- treat them like they're in the center, so I'm subtracting this, but I'm subtracting too much now, if I calculate this. So if I say D over two, should I say D, I meant D over two? No, but then that's still not, that's not the magnetic field, the D. I could find the magnetic field of D over two. Sorry, at at the origin.
In my mind, um I combined the green lines right away and put them on one side. Yeah, yeah, and when you, when you put them on one side, then there's gonna be a gap of length two D, like D above and D below, but you drew on the left, basically, if you're ignoring one.
Oh, I see, okay, so, oh, I see, I see, yeah, 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 so I don't have to account for this one, essentially. I don't have to count for this one.
Or or you just do one D on one side, one D on the other, we'll come up with two D in total.
It's just that if I do one D on one side, one D on the other, then I have to calculate the magnetic field, the D over two, you have to be at the middle of the wire. Right? You have to be at the middle of the wire, so this should work.
Good point, okay.
This should work, so, yeah, so if I, if I wanna calculate this, and I know the length, it's just gonna be mu not I, where am I, mu not I, yeah, I L, L is two D, two D, over two pi A, A is the distance from the thing, so that's gonna be, well, A. The root L, which was two D, so L squared, I mean, so it's gonna be two squared D squared plus two squared A squared. So again, this is just gonna be a two that factors out, so it's just gonna be mu not I over two pi A. A here is A, is actually A. And that that up there is actually D. D two D, yeah, that makes sense. Minus, so uh two is gonna come out again, so it's gonna be mu not I uh D over two pi A square root D squared plus A squared. So now if I somehow combine these, this is our total from two and three. So if I combine this into the net magnetic field, mu not I A over two pi D root A squared plus D squared minus mu not I D over two pi A, oh, there's an A there, well, I guess I can common denominator it, and then A squared plus D squared plus mu not I over two pi A. Yeah, if I multiply this one by A and this one by D then I can combine this into mu not I A squared minus mu not I D squared over two pi A D square root A squared plus D squared plus mu not I over two pi A. And then I can factor out something. What can I factor out? I can factor out mu not I over two pi A. Which would give me A squared minus D squared over D square root A squared plus D squared plus one. Which. No, that's still not, that's still not there at the at the answer like how we have it, mu not I over two pi A. The AD is right, there is an AD at the, on the denominator, this it's just weird that the, the answer has a, the square root in the numerator.
My best guess is at some step, I don't know where, but they probably rationalized, like they they didn't wanna root in the bottom, unless there's an actual reason for that, otherwise I think it's like math reasons, you know, and math, I don't know if you ever had a teacher would yell at you for that, but I had one. Told me they don't like roots in the bottom.
The answer on Slater is also completely different. It's, yeah, it's just completely different, oh, I guess it's one, oh, maybe it's not completely different, it's one.
Solution proof MIT and it uses like cosine and stuff.
Okay, I think we should move on, cause it's nine o'clock and we got a few more questions to go through, so I think we will move on from this one. Uh and we'll try our best with the next one, see how it goes.
Yeah, let's all pray that or hope that we won't see something like this tomorrow.
Yes. I agree. Let's see what's next. So, number eleven, which is next. Which is, is it a similar problem, hope not. Two long parallel wires carry currents I and I two in the directions indicated. Find the magnitude and direction of the magnetic field at a point midway between the wires. Okay. Midway between the wires, so here, right there, I guess. And they have in the same direction. Two long parallel wires carry currents, I guess in this, yeah, in the same, I guess, yeah, the same direction, it shows the same direction. Uh indicated by the figure, find the magnitude and direction of the field. Okay. And the next one is find it at P, D equals twenty centimeters, do we have to use D equals twenty centimeters, I think we do. Unless we're just supposed to do it in general for A without knowing D, I think if we we might have to know D. Yeah, it has the number, so I'm pretty sure we're supposed to know the fact that D equals twenty. This is also D, yeah. Okay, well, the magnetic field, let's see, what's caused by it, it's going up, so there's a magnetic field like that, and then this, there's a magnetic field like that. So there's one going up and one going down. So it doesn't matter which one's positive, which one's negative, just they're opposites, so I guess I'll say the one from uh the one from this one, I one is the positive one. So the net magnetic field is this magnetic field with this wire, which was mu not yeah, mu not I over two pi times the distance, which is D over two. Minus mu not was I one, minus mu not I two over two pi D over two. I can factor out mu not over two pi D over two, which is just gonna simplify into pi D. Um which is just gonna be I one minus I two. So mu not is it's gonna be four times ten to the negative seven over D. D was zero point two meters times I one minus I two. Three minus five, so negative four times ten to the negative six. Uh which is, yeah, that's right, negative four times ten to the negative six, so that just means down, the negative just means down, uh Tesla. So that worked. Find the magnitude and direction of the mag- magnetic field at a point P located D equals twenty centimeters above, so that's okay, just make this just make this triangle like that, okay, well, let's figure out the fields first of all, so this field, this magnetic field goes like that, so it's gonna look like uh like that, and this magnetic field looks like that. Yep. So I just find the X and Y components of this one and then add that and then do like the magnitude of the vector, pretty sure. So start with I two, the one caused by I two. Start with the one from I two, so that's just gonna be mu not I two over two pi A and A is, is D. Okay, and so that's just, and that's just all in the um, well, it's all in the negative negative that in the I hat direction. I guess we don't really care, whatever, I'll just do magnitudes, so the magnitude of the B field is that, I know it's in the negative X direction. So equals that, so then for I one uh I'll just find the magnitude, B is mu not I one over two pi and this is gonna be root two D, so root two D. Then to get the um yeah, to get the magnitude of these added together, I just do the X components, what's the Y components? So, uh the X component of the, so XB is just gonna be mu not, well, I guess negative, mu not I two, except which way is it going? I guess I'll define this as positive. That's positive. So the positive mu not I two over two pi D plus mu not I one over two pi root two D, uh and then cosine of what angle, cosine of forty five. Cosine forty five, good. And then the magnitude of the Y component is just gonna be um mu not I over two pi root two D sine forty five. Which is gonna be, uh that's root two over two. Uh root two over two, yes, it's gonna be mu not I over four pi D. So I guess I'll get a number for that, yeah, I'll get a number for that. Four pi, so it's just ten to the negative seven times uh what I though, uh I one. I one, yeah, I one. There, I one was three over just D and D was zero point two. So I get one point five times ten to the negative six Tesla. And then for this one, this is again root two over two, so this is just gonna be, that's gonna go away, that's gonna go away, that's gonna be a four. So then uh it's just gonna be, I can factor out a I can factor out a mu not uh over two pi D. Yeah, you know, over two pi D. So this will just be I two plus I one over two. That makes sense to me, o- okay. So let's try that, um, it's just gonna be four times ten to the negative, so two times ten to the negative seven over zero point two times I two. I two was five plus three over two. So I got from here six point five times ten to the negative six, and then I want the square root of answer squared plus um one point five times ten to the negative six squared. So I get six point six nine four times ten to the negative six as my answer. Um, yeah, six point six seven is the answer. Six point six nine four times ten to the negative six Tesla is our magnitude, our actual, actual magnitude vector. Okay, and then uh just a direction, well how do they do the direction, oh yeah, they do it from the positive X, I just do the tan inverse of the Y component over the X component, I guess. Tan inverse of the um Y component, which was one point five times ten to the negative six over six point five times ten to the negative six. So I get thirteen degrees, that's not right, but yeah, I get thirteen degrees from one eighty one sixty seven, uh one eighty minus that, yeah, okay, I get thirteen degrees here, thirteen degrees here. How is that a positive number? Oh yeah, but I need to be in quadrant two, yeah, but I need to be in quadrant two here, so it's one sixty seven. The, this angle here is, yeah, that makes sense, actually, that's gonna be one sixty seven. And there we go. That was just a vector problem. Okay, that was eleven. Anybody stop me if you have any questions, otherwise I'm just gonna keep going because I wanna get these done. Thirteen is next. So two parallel wires are separated by six centimeters, each carrying a three amp current in the same direction. What is the magnitude of the force per unit length between the wires, is the force attractive or repulsive? Okay, so this is just the formula for this essentially, but let's maybe answer first, is the, is it um attractive or repulsive, well, the force is attractive if the currents are in the same direction, I have that in my notes here, so they're in the same direction, so it's attractive, so for part B the answer is attractive. And then for part A, what is the magnitude of the force, well, the magnitude of, sorry, the magnitude of the force per length is, force per length is gonna be mu not I one, I two over two pi uh A is the distance between them. And that's it. So it's gonna be four times three point one four one five, or is there pi on the bottom, yes, there is, so it's gonna be two times ten to the negative seven. Cause I'm canceling with the two pi on the bottom, times, uh so they're both three amps divided by uh A, which is zero point zero six. So I got that, that, the force per length is three times ten to the negative five Tesla, uh Newtons. Well, Newtons per meter. Yeah, Newtons per meter. Three times ten to the negative five. Yep, that's good.
Question. Why did you multiply the I's instead of adding them?
Like, well, okay, well, let's see here, the the, because the force formula, the force between two wires is this, this is the force between two wires, and I'm looking for the force per length, so I just divide by L here, I just divide by L here. Yeah, so this is a force between two wires. Okay, um so there's that. Um fifteen is next, and fifteen, it kinda looks long. So maybe I'll just quickly look at what the next one is, seventeen and thirty nine. Is that thirty nine, you probably won't end up doing, seventeen is also kinda long, so let's start with fifteen and let's see what's going on here. You are part of a team working in a machine parts mechanic shop, an important customer has asked your company to provide springs with a very precise force constant K. To measure the spring constant, uh you fasten two of the springs between the ends of two very long wires of length L separated by an unstretched length L. Yeah, of the springs, as shown oh, L is, L is the length of the wire, L is the length of the, little L is the length of the spring unstretched. As shown, figure the specific attachment method you want to, you want to use insulates the springs from the wire so that no current passes through the springs. Okay. You lay the apparatus flat on the table and then pass a current of magnitude I through the wires in opposite directions, as the result of the spring as a result, the springs are stretched by a distance D and come to equilibrium. You d- you determine an expression for the spring constant in terms of L, current, little L and D, okay. So they're in opposite directions first of all, so that means that it's, the force is repulsive between them. So what are the where do we even do a force diagram, like where do we even do a free body diagram? Here? And here? We do a bunch of free body diagrams? So the sum of the forces, I mean, I guess it's the same force. I guess if I just do one here, it's the same as all of them, so I'll start right there, the, there's a force in this direction which is by the opposite wire, there's a force in this direction by the spring. They're equal, there's no friction or anything like that. So I think we say the force from the spring equals the force from the um uh from the other wire, whatever, there. The force from the spring is uh K delta X. Yeah, K delta X, oh, I guess is the distance stretched by a distance D, so D equals force from the wire is just gonna be that formula I just set up here, which was mu not are they the same current, same current, so mu not I squared L, uh what's L? L is the length of the wire, so capital L over two pi times the distance between them. So the distance between them is um is gonna be L plus two D. No, L plus D. Because it's stretched, so it starts, this distance here is L, and then it stretches a distance D, so then that, that final distance is L plus D. And then I think I just divide by D. And is that it, I don't know, that's, that's, that would be my answer.
Why do you have L plus D? Because L plus D, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You see why?
My bad, it's stretched, yeah, it's stretched by that.
Uh let's see if that's right though, I have a feeling it's not, that seemed too easy. Um, mu not I squared L over four pi D. L plus D, only difference is that this is a four, uh why is it a four, did I copy the formula wrong? No, I got the right answer for the last question, so that formula. Was it?
I think it's because there's two springs, so um.
So it's two times the force here, oh no, it's the force.
Same would be what you got.
Oh, there's twice the force here, there's twice the force here, yeah. So there's twice the force here, so then I divide both sides by two, yeah, yeah, okay, so mu not I squared L over uh four pi D L plus D, okay, that's that one.
So we considered we, we considered our, the body that we did the free body diagram, it's the upper wire or the upper.
The upper bar, yeah, I guess the whole upper, yeah, I guess I should have accounted for that differently, yeah, it's not at that point, you should have, I should have done, I guess I should have done like the free body diagram for all the forces acting here, right, so that's two, two forces, one force like that, one force like that, or sorry, no. One force in the middle like that and then two forces back down this way. Right, which is why it's two FS equals FW. Okay, so that's that. Seventeen is next. And then the last one, this is the second last one, then last one is thirty nine, but I have a feeling thirty nine is another one of those challenge questions, so, no, it's not actually. So hopefully, you know, maybe we'll be able to do it. Screenshot of both of them, okay. So seventeen is the unit of magnetic flux, magnetic flux is named for Wilhelm We- Weber. A practical sized unit of magnetic field is named for Johann Carl Gauss. Uh along with their individual accomplishments, Weber and Gauss built a telegraph in eighteen eighty thirty three that consisted of a battery and a switch at one end of the transmission line three kilometers long, operating an electromagnet at the other end. Suppose their transmission line was uh was diagrammed in this figure, two long parallel wires, each having a mass unit mass per unit length of four grams per meter, forty grams per meter, are supported with a horizontal plane by strings of length six centimeters long, when both wires carry the same current I, the wires repel. So that the angle between the supporting string the supporting strings is sixteen degrees. Okay. Are the currents in the same direction or in opposite directions, okay, well, it's repelling, so they're in opposite directions. So part A is they're in opposite directions. Okay, and the next one is find the current in the wire. Okay, so find the current in. Okay, so find the current in the wire is our problem here. So we have them going in opposite direction, so this one, let's say, is going that way. This one's going that way. But let's say it's the same current. Then that angle, somehow we have to relate that angle to a, a dis- no, no. Okay, I guess we can say that the length of the string is. Two L, so the, the length of string. Is two L like that, right? Because it's L down and L back up. I mean, I can, no, but then there's this middle bit here. That doesn't make sense.
I think we can make that assumption.
You think so? Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, do we treat this sort of like an equilibrium question where, because it's being pushed, they're being pushed apart. That means the force of tension in the string. I guess there's two strings, but does it? But the tension in the X, the X component of the tension would be equal to the force that they're repelling each other with. And the Y component would be, they would have to, everything has to balance, balance in that.
Yeah, yeah, let's look at it from the side here. So there's like the beam like that, there's the, the rope that goes like this. And then, so what's happening to one of the beams? There's a force that's repelling it, there's a force of tension like that. This angle is theta, like that whole angle is theta, not zero theta. So.
One.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, isn't there another one in the bottom? So it, would it be like two T? Instead of just oh, one?
Yeah, I guess it would be two, and there'd also be gravity, actually, force of gravity.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So do, yeah, so do we do just an equilibrium thing? Maybe we just do an equilibrium?
I think that's an equilibrium question.
I think we just say the sum of the forces is equal to zero, so the sum of the forces in the X direction equals zero, which tells us that. Uh, I'll call that. X, Y positive. Um. Yeah, so I'll say negative F B. Why am I red? Negative F B. Plus.
Would we divide the angle by two? And then that would be the angle for each Y with respect to the vertical?
With respect to the vertical?
They'd be pushing each other, would they be pushing each other with the same force? So they would be exactly like.
Yeah, so this angle, that's. Theta over two. That angle is theta over two, yeah. So then it would be, uh, F T or two F T. Um, cos, uh, cosine, no, sine of pi theta over two.
Wait, why is it two F T?
Uh, cause there's one force going up like this and one force going up like this. There's two wires touching, there's two strings. So sine theta over two, okay? That's everything in the X direction equals zero. And then we need, um. In the Y direction, we just have negative F G. Plus two F T cosine theta over two equals zero. Okay, so what are we not, what are we looking for here? We're looking for I, which we're gonna get from F B. So how long is the wire? Do we know how long the wire is? Three kilometer long, yeah. Let me highlight the information here. Three kilometers long. Unit mass per length is that, length of the string is that, angle is that. It's fine. So, uh, yeah, yeah, so I can do this. So I'm just gonna note that F B is the magnitude of F B. Is the magnitude of, well, I times the magnitude of L, times the magnitude of B, no. Yeah, times the magnitude of B, times sine of the angle between them. I won't call that theta, but was the angle between those two things. Um. Or no, 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 that's not what it is. Uh, this is what it is, that's what I said before. So the force acting on these wires. They're next to each other is mu not, I one, I two, which is the same, L, which is gonna be capital L. Over two pi times the distance between them. Uh, what's the distance between them? Um.
We had to use small L to find it.
Small L, yeah, so I'll use, I'll use, I'll just draw this triangle. So this is eight degrees, cause the whole thing is sixteen degrees, so that's eight degrees. And small L is six, right, six? Six centimeters, yeah. So then this is gonna be, that's our right angle, so we wanna use the opposite and the, I drew this triangle bad, hypotenuse, so sine. Sin, uh, of eight degrees is the opposite, which is what we're looking for, I call it X over. So six sine eight. Six sine eight is zero point eight three five. So it's zero point eight four centimeters. So that's this side over here. That side right there. So now that we know that, that's fine. So that's gonna be A and it's gonna be two times that, right? Two times that. So I'll just say. Four times. I'll call this distance. D. Well, I guess I'll call this. Yeah, and this is D over two. Okay, I'll just find D, this just times two. So D equals, call that D, or can I call that D? Is there any other D in the formulas? No, I don't think so. D equals one point six seven centimeters. So two pi. Uh, it should be two pi D. Okay. Uh, we're looking for I, so I think we can just plug this in and figure out everything we don't know. Let's see, hopefully. Negative mu not, I squared, L over two pi D plus two F T. Sin theta over two equals zero, uh, negative F G plus two. F T cosine. They, ah, theta over two equals zero. What is, what are my unknowns? Do I know I? No, that's what I'm looking for, that's my target. Do I know capital L? Yeah, that's three kilometers, right? That's, that's my length of the wire. Two pi and D I know, F T I don't know, sine theta I do know. So I have two unknowns, a known and, sorry, that's an unknown, that's an unknown. F G is M G. So I don't know that just yet, but I will know that. I don't know that either. I do know that. So let's see here, F G is just gonna be M G. Negative M G. And what's the mass? Well, um, we know the, um. Mass per unit length, right? So we know that, uh, mass per unit length mu equals. Mass per length. And I wanna have mass, so that's gonna tell us that mass is mu length. So I'll put that in here. So this is just mu length and length of the string I know, right? That's gonna be. Not length of the strings, right, but length of the wire, I know that, that's gonna be. Three kilometers. So I can just find another mass per unit length. Yeah, I know everything here. So this is a check, check, check. So I can just solve for F T here, plug that in. Yeah, solve for F T here, plug that in, solve for I, I two. Okay, so F T equals. Mu L G over two cosine theta over two. Plug that into here. Uh, that's gonna be into that top equation, it's gonna be negative mu not, I squared, L. Over two pi D. Plus two, and I'll plug this into here, mu not, no, no, that's actually mu, that's actual mu, not mu not. Better not confuse that. Actual mu, L G over two cosine theta over two. Sin theta over two, cause that's sine theta over two right there, equals zero. So now I can just solve for, uh, L, no, I, sorry, solve for I. So. I equals, well, I'll say I squared for now, I squared equals. Um, so it's gonna be. L, no, two pi D. Over mu not L. Times. Um, mu L G. Over two. Tan theta over two. Equals, oh, equals I, and square root of that is I. So, um, I lost the two, so that shouldn't be there. And that is the only mistake I made. This L should go away. Yeah, that should be right. If I made a mis, if the answer's wrong, quite possibly it's from that step right there, so. Mu G tan theta over two over mu not. Everything we know here. So let's see. Square root of two pi times D, which we said was one point six seven centimeters, so zero point zero one six seven. Times actual mu, which is the mass per length, which we get from the question, which is forty grams per meter, but we want kilograms per meter. So forty grams per meter, wanna turn that into, uh, kilograms. So in one kilogram, there's a thousand grams, so I divide that by a thousand. So I'm gonna say, whoops. I'm gonna say forty divided by a thousand. Okay, times nine point eight one. Times tan of theta over two, which is eight. Over mu not, which is four times three point one four one five nine two six five, times ten to the negative seven. And I get sixty seven point eight amps. Yes, there we go, it's correct. I was sixty seven point eight amps.
What did you say, uh, uh, mu was again?
Uh, fo- it was forty over a thousand. In.
Okay, thank you.
In kilograms per meter.
Wait, but then why is there two mus?
Mu, mu, this mu is like the linear mass density, like how many kilograms per meter? Mu not is that constant from current. Mu not is four pi times ten to the negative seven.
Oh, okay.
And yeah, okay, that was a good question. I'm happy it worked. Seventeen. Okay, guys, we have one last question, part of this. And then, uh, that will be the end. Any questions about this one? Okay, now I will take that as no. So who knows if we're gonna end on a bad one here, so, you know, hopefully not, let's see. Uh, thirty nine, two identical flat circular coils of wire, each have a hundred turns and radius R. The coils are arranged as a set of Helmholtz coils, so that the sep- okay, I don't know what a Helmholtz coil is, so.
This is the lab.
This is the lab?
I'm pretty sure this is the lab.
Yeah.
That we did it since.
I don't know what a Helmholtz coil is, so I don't, I won't be able to answer this. Uh, there's a picture, though.
It's the same like, like coil that was in the lab. Let me send you this letter question and just, uh, the answer and just paste it there with the picture.
Sure. Oh, here it is, I found the, I found the, uh.
Yeah, there was an equation that they gave us when we did the lab that probably answers this question, but I don't remember what that is, so.
Yeah, maybe I'll look at the lab. Okay, so, so the separation distance between the coils is equal to the radius of the coils. Each coil carries current I, determine the magnitude of the, of the magnetic field at a point on the common axis of the coils halfway between them. Halfway between them.
Should I send, should I send answer or do you wanna work it out?
Sure, no, you send, sure. I, I don't know, I don't really, I have to have a formula for the Helmholtz coils, I don't know the formula. And, uh. I tried to find the lab, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it is, it is the lab formula. Uh, it just.
Okay, let's see. So here, using the formula from the previous problem, we have determined B to be in the middle of Helmholtz setup we have. So. Is that what it is in general? That's the general, or is that plugged in values already?
No, uh, I think this is the plugged in values. Like the bottom ones, they're plugged in, all of them.
This, this is, this is plugged in too, though, right? Yeah, that would be simple, that would be.
Let me go to the previous question, let me see the equation they have there.
If you have to do the general equation for it.
I don't think that equation's gonna pop up on the, uh.
The test?
The test, cause it's like, they, it's not even mentioned by any of the professors.
That's true, yeah. It is just on the lab, so probably not. I would say almost definitely not. So let's just try to answer it. So we're looking for the magnetic field. Um. This is giving us that magnetic field, mu not, I, R squared is the radius of it, X is X the distance from this. Oh, you know what? I think it's probably just a mixture of. Let's see here. Yeah, it looks very similar to. This. From my notes. It's just that it's a bunch of coils, it's not just one coil. Uh, it's essentially the same thing. No, it is the same thing. Yeah, it is the same thing as this. So this is from the center of one, so actually this is in the course, cause this, this was part of, uh. The Osevar law. Um, so to find, like, if we're right here and there's a coil like that. So I guess we just assume it's just one coil? Is there just one coil? Or that looks like two? No, probably just consider that one coil. And then, yeah, there's only one current, just shows one current. And then we just add the two together here. They're both in the same direction. But hold on, that's going like that. So that's like that, and that's like that as well. So they're, it's all pointing. The, the field would point that way, and then we just add the magnitudes. So I think we just do. I think we just do two times this. Yeah, which would be two times that, cause we're looking for a point in the middle. So I think our magnitude is going to be mu not, I, A is what? A is the distance between them is. Um. Uh, separation distance between the coils is equal to the radius of the coils. So distance is the radius, so we wanna be halfway between. So it's radius over two squared. Over, so I have two of them, so I'm gonna get rid of the two on the bottom. Radius over two squared plus. Um. Oh, that's right, that's the radius, doesn't matter, okay. Radius squared. To the three halves. So that's the A squared. Yeah, okay.
Wait, from your notes, uh, is A the radius or A is the distance from the?
Yeah, the, it's probably hard to see on the screen. That's A, what I just drew there, A, and this is X. So A is the radius, the radius of the coil.
Then why is it R over two? Didn't this is the radius?
Yeah, you're right, it's just, I, I, it's just addition, so it's the same, either, either way. Yeah, it should be the other way.
We need to account for the number of loops, so I think you have to multiply this by the number of loops there are in the coil.
I do have to do.
So it's just, you just make a new variable called N, which is what they do with the answer.
Oh, I see. And so it's just.
I'll remember that from the lab, cause.
It's just N times this?
Yeah, cause I think, cause that will, that would, if that's the field from one loop, you're just mul- there, the, imagine the loops are all in the same place. So you would just magnify it by.
Yeah, so just at the end, I'm just gonna multiply by a hundred. I think. Or multiply by two hundred? Yeah, multiply by two hundred, cause each coil has two hundred turns. Each coil has a hundred turns, so two hundred turns in total, two hundred coils. They're distance apart, though, so that's a problem, but.
I don't know, I'm just trying to remember off the lab. I know we gotta use the, the, the turns in the thing.
Yeah, you just multiply it by the turns, I think.
So two hundred, at the end I'm gonna multiply, well, here, I'll just multiply by two hundred. I'll multiply by N. Okay, so what do I know? Well, mu not, uh, I can't really simplify anything here, so I'll just, I'll just start plugging in, I guess. So it's gonna be mu not, which is four times three point one four one five nine two six five, times ten to the negative seven. Times I, which was ten amps. Times something squared, the something is R over two, R was zero point five meters, so zero point five over two. Um, times two hundred for the N. Over something to the three halves. So R squared was zero point five squared, plus something squared, and that something is zero point five over two. So I get zero point zero eight. Tesla for this.
Are we missing a two on the denominator? For that, is it supposed to be two times that something to the three over two?
You're right, yeah, I, I mean, not really, cause I, I, I did it kind of on. Oh, you're right, yeah, I I mean, not really cuz I I, I did it kind of on purpose because I knew I was multiplying by two cuz there's two coils. But then I said two hundred turns, so yeah, then I should, I should just divide by two now.
Wait, run that back again with your explanation of why you didn't edit in the first place?
Well, because I was just saying like I had two coils, so I was just gonna multiply by two. I was gonna do this one for each and I was just gonna mul- like multiply by two cuz it's the same thing, so the two would just cancel. But then since I'm accounting for the two coils by putting two hundred up here, then that two should be.
So that's how the lab only used the turns, like, we just used the turns, we didn't multiply the turns by two, I guess then.
Yeah, thirty nine. Thirty nine is. No, not the answer, did not get it.
You know, I was gonna tell you, I think on the top, the R over two is not supposed to be R over two, it's supposed to be R. Because it's supposed to be A, right, on the numerator?
Yeah.
It's just supposed to be R, A is the radius of the loop.
Yeah, okay, okay, let's try that, that seems right. And then I'll get rid of the, get rid of the one. One point six. Nope, still not right.
Okay, I went to the lab, I grabbed the equ- equation from the lab.
I think this is it though, yeah.
The equation, I'll read it off if it lines up, the equation from the lab that we use. Um is eight mu naught N I. Over R times the square root of one twenty five, that's the one we use in the lab.
What is that equal to, magnetic field?
Yeah, it's equal to to the ma- uh magnitude of B.
Where though, where was it, was it?
For a he ha- Ha- Helmholtz system, uh the B field between the coils is approximately uniform and is given by the expression. This thing.
Let's, let's try it, let's see if this gives.
How do you derive it though?
I will send it right now, I just went to the lab, uh to the la- to the lab medical, I sent it, I think.
Okay.
But it's the same what you have here.
And R was zero point five times the square root of one twenty five. Three point six times ten to the negative, no, it's also not the answer, although I think it's exactly twice the answer. Yeah, it's exactly twice the answer.
Okay, that's interesting.
Oh, because I used two, I said two hundred coils, two hundred turns.
Oh, no, you think you're supposed to use one hundred for this.
But it says each coils of wire each have a hundred turns.
Yeah, in the, in the lab, uh it says N is the number of turns in each coil, not the total number.
Oh, okay, then there you go, and then that that will do it.
So then, yes, so that somehow you can derive that equation, uh I don't know how you got screw it one, I don't know how they get screw it one twenty five though, that's the thing. I was that pulled out of the denominator and where the eight come from, I don't know, man.
I don't know either, but that's the end of chapter twenty nine, I'm happy to say, um that's all the questions there. Um.
Oh, no, we ended on a bad note.
Well, we, at least we got the answer, we did get.
Why are you talking alone? This is how we should end, this is how we should end, we always end. With a weird question, this is how it should go, and it always.
I don't think we need to even worry about this, this is like, even if, it's just like so long and. I don't think, it isn't, how long are the, how many questions are there, like?
Twenty?
So and there's two hours, I think.
We can figure it out, we can figure it out, so the question is now, should I do something at noon tomorrow? Before the test?
Yes.
Yes.
If people wanna see it, cuz then, yeah.
Bro, yeah.
You can't want you.
None of us went over any older topics, we kinda focused on the newer topics that we went over.
They did say, they did say that two to sixty six percent of the questions are gonna be from the newer things.
Yeah, but still, that's a third of things that we should.
That's a third of things, I mean, that's a third of things we can BS, but okay.
Yeah, that's true, so I was thinking, yeah.
You can't really BS it cuz some of them are short answer questions, like you have to put in numbers.
Roughly six questions on older topics, if you wanna BS it, you can, but we could go over.
Yeah, yeah, I'm obviously trolling.
General stuff of of previous topics, probably gravity, gravity wasn't too hard, it's pretty easy to go over.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about you go over like, the hard question from the midterms, like maybe a couple of questions from the past midterms concept.
Yeah, terms or lab or lab questions or something, so we'll just go, we'll do it at noon tomorrow, probably for two hours and then that'll be everything.
And then we will have a four hours study hall for M T H.
Which I feel like I have to study for E C N, so I feel like I'm just not, I maybe I'll, i- if it's recorded, I'll watch it after or.
Who is giving this for our study hall? Now, I I I I know that I I have no whatsoever foundation in E C N, I need to practice E C N.
Yeah, I need to work on E C N, I haven't done chapter fourteen at all yet, today I did chapter eight.
Oh, noe.
So I haven't done any.
I haven't done E C N, I haven't done E C N in a while, yeah, it's just like, I don't know, E C N is right now, let's not talk about.
If you spend like a one whole day on it, then you should probably be able to do everything.
Exact, well, I did.
Who said that, who said that? I'm quoting her.
Yeah.
Quoting her, who said that?
He's holding you responsible for.
I'm holding you responsible.
Feeling one whole day.
For E C N, for E C N, I would highly suggest, if you have gone over all the content that's gonna be on it. Uh you posted two old exams, uh try to do one of the old exams without. Don't look at the answers until you've answered every single question. Just like, it's not, it's.
Wait, uh I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Do you have the, does Springer post the actual answers for the physics things? Well, that's what you're looking at, right?
No, for what, what do, what do you mean? Like where I was gonna be answers for this?
Yeah.
Just from the textbook, just the back of the textbook.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying, cuz like, doesn't he post the answer, like the numerical answers for them?
For what? For these questions that we were doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Even number questions.
Oh, for even number questions he does?
No, I'm just asking, where did you find the answers for these questions?
These in the back of the textbook.
Oh, okay.
Just in the back of the, everything is back in the back of the textbook.
Oh, by the way, did did Springer post any like um final exams? Like uh like.
They never, the experiment doesn't ever post any final exams, I don't think they're, I think they have like a policy about that. They they can, they can show older questions like handpicked by the professors, but they don't release old exams.
Oh, well, I I would agree with you until this exact second when I saw this just now, I'd never seen it before.
Then they release them, this, what was my prof saying, he's like, I guys, I can't, I can't give you guys uh.
Maybe that's just lab. Maybe that's just on paper.
There's an exam back, like i- in on Ryerson website, there's like an exam bank and then you can look at all those. Like that's how I study for CPS too, like I just looked at all the.
Is a legal way.
It is, it's from, it's it's.
They don't have the econ, do they have econ?
Yeah, they have everything, you need to.
They don't have econ.
Hey, wait, I don't know.
Yeah.
I I was like, can you like, I feel like I don't really get this question though, do you wanna like run through it again or like nah?
This one we hear, essentially, essentially, we're just using this, this formula from the lab, this is a lab formula. And it gives you the exact magnetic field of exactly what the question's asking, the magnetic.
When we use what, one hundred?
Uh one hundred coils, yeah, one hundred, N is one hundred.
Okay, so where does the factor two come in like, where does, how do we get it involved since it's two? Or is it like finding just for one coil?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the, this is a Helmholtz system, so it has whatever amount of coils.
Kinda like one?
Yeah, you could just, it's the same as if there's one, yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe I don't know if it's the same as there's one, but it's the same as if there's three or something like that, I think, you might have to have two minimum, but.
Okay.
After two, it is the same.
Yeah, they don't have econ, there is no econ on it.
So, alright, so basically you just use the formula, I think.
Yeah, just use the formula.
Wait, for this formula to work, both um coils have to have the same amount of turns, right?
Uh yes.
I'm almost sure we're gonna have a question like that, like the one with the ring.
Yeah.
I'm eighty percent sure we're gonna have a question like it.
Possibly, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, you won't be asked about a Helmholtz probably, because uh again, we have no idea how this equation got derived from.
Yeah.
But they can ask you about the ring and they can ask you about like um an arc path, I think that was another one that we didn't really do.
Yeah, it's in my notes, if you wanna see it. And yeah, of course, everybody can go look at my notes on the website and that's. So a long session, this was a, I've been, I've been recording for four hours and forty minutes.
Yeah, that's a pretty long time.
I think you cannot cover electric circuits here, right?
What'd you say, what was it?
We did not, we do not cover electric circuits, this one was the last example.
DC circuits, yeah, it said it was in the course management, it said it's like a self study, but I don't.
No, she's, no self study chapters are on.
I just sent the question, this one was her last, her last example that she did in the last five minutes of the last lecture.
Yeah.
Yeah. She said it's all about ma- magnetic field, but yeah, I thought, I thought it's, it will be good for people to see it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz it's include electric circuits and everything, and it's, it's kind of annoying.
Wait, this is a question that we could be asked?
Oh, what?
This was covered at the end, this was, she's saying this was covered at the end, yeah.
Yeah, the last example she did for us, I can post the answer as well from her notes.
I don't know if this applies to physics, but I think it applies to math for certain things, if not every. Uh professor covers a certain topic, they can't, you can't necessarily be evaluated on it.
Yeah.
I know that happened in math for, I forget what, there was.
For linear algebra.
Linear algebra had it too, but there was one item for this, this in calc two.
Oh, really?
Um like some professors covered like, I think it was like word, word problems of a sp- of like a certain chapter. But then other professors didn't and you would, if you were asked a word problem on like, you, they couldn't, they couldn't do that to.
Yeah, it's six point four, the word problems is going for with like probability and uh that stuff like that, yeah.
Maybe, I don't remember exactly, but yeah, it was something like that.
Material science, Professor Ravi is like very, very behind in everything, they just. We did a lab about thermodynamics things.
Yeah.
And then they just did not include it, we did not study, but we did the lab.
Yeah.
For what, what is this for?
M T L, material.
Oh, oh, okay.
I always have a nice belief when they're talking about something I don't have to.
Yeah, I know.
It's a, it's a good feeling.
You're so lucky you're not doing material science.